To begin shortly, thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Executive Budget Hearing of the Committee on Finance jointly with Public Housing. At this time, I need everybody to please silence your cellphones. If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip, even if you're already registered online. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's, I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Thank you for your cooperation, chairs, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, good morning and welcome to the second day of the FY25 Executive Budget Hearings. I'm Councilmember Justin Brennan, and I chair the Committee on Finance. Today's hearing is on the New York City Housing Authority, and I'm pleased to be joined by my colleague and friend, Councilmember Chris Banks, Chair of the Committee on Public Housing. We've been joined this morning by Councilmembers Hanks, Marte, Brooks Powers, and Hanif. Welcome to NICA's CEO, Lisa Bova Hyatt, and your team. Thank you all for joining us today to answer our questions. On April 24th, 2024, the administration released the executive financial plan for FY24 to '28 with a proposed FY25 budget of $111.6 billion. While NICA's budget is not part of the city budget, the city does provide supplemental funding to the authority. NICA's proposed supplement in the FY25 executive plan is $274.8 million, which is an increase of $58.3 million from the $216.5 million originally allocated in the FY25 preliminary plan. This increase is mostly due to additional community development, block grant disaster recovery funds related to Hurricane Ida rebuilding, and as well as resiliency projects and city-funded salary adjustments for NICA staff. In the council's response to the mayor's preliminary budget, we called for $584 million in capital funds for NICA to fill repair requests that have been denied, support the vacancy unit readiness program, and bring on staff to restart delayed community and other discretionary projects. I am troubled and concerned to see that not only does the executive plan not include $1 of what the council called for, but cuts nearly $7 million worth of security guards at 55 NICA buildings for seniors, one of them in my district. My questions today will largely focus on these unfunded capital needs, the elimination of unarmed security guards, and other staffing attrition, the readiness of the vacancy units, rental arrears, and disaster response funding. The plain truth is, we're still in a housing crisis. The state has taken steps recently, but our public housing stock remains the biggest advantage we have in seeing New Yorkers keep a roof over their head and to build a stable life. It's vital to make sure NICA tenants and their homes get the attention they deserve, and I think you'd agree. So I look forward to hearing from the CEO and her team, and the questions from my colleagues today. I'm now going to turn it over to my co-chair for this hearing, the council's Chair of the Public Housing Committee, Councilmember Chris Banks, for his opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Brennan, and welcome once again to everyone to attending today's hearing on fiscal year 2025 executive budget for NICA. I'm Councilmember Chris Banks, the Chair of the Public Housing Committee, and I want to also again thank the NICA Authority, CEO Bova, and staff for coming. NICA has operated the largest public housing program in the nation for over 75 years, providing affordable housing to over half a million working class and low-income New Yorkers throughout the Section 9 public housing and Section 8 voucher programs. NICA is a precious and critical resource in an increasingly unaffordable city. However, it has $78 billion in capital needs resulting from decades of underinvestment. These needs simply do not have the required funding in NICA's five-year capital plan, which totals only $8.21 billion. Unfortunately, the administration did not add a dime in funding to NICA in the executive capital commitment plan. The council's preliminary budget response made very clear how the city would spend another half a billion dollars annually to approve NICA's apartments and turn them over faster for new tenants. For example, the council called for an additional $45 million to expedite the rehabilitation of vacant apartments throughout NICA's struggling vacant unit readiness program. However, no funding was added. Since 2021, the number of vacant NICA apartments has exploded tenfold to nearly 5,000. However, the administration has pushed successively rounds of pegs on the program. The committee looks forward to understanding NICA's capital priorities in this environment of a new capital support for the city. We also wish to learn about any changes to capital priorities or timelines now that we are five months into NICA's fiscal year. Part of this discussion will include $30.7 million added in fiscal year 2025 for federally-funded disaster recovery projects resulting from Hurricane Ida. Although only a fraction of NICA's developments will receive the improvements, they represent a meaningful investment at improving some elevators and floodwater management infrastructure. I hope to also hear updates about the public-private partnership alternatives to Section 9, which are Rad, PAC, and the Preservation Trusts. These strategies are key to NICA's long-term approach to making capital repairs, and it is noteworthy that the PAC capital funding ends in fiscal year 2026 in the executive budget. And we look forward to also understanding if the city's target of 62,000 apartments can really be converted to the PAC by then. Regardless of the program, NICA tenants are served by, they all serve quality maintenance work, they all deserve quality maintenance work, and a clean and safe place to live. NICA's 2024 operating budget totals $5 billion and runs an anticipated $35 million deficit. The deficit is expected to grow to $64 million in 2026, and in part due to the ongoing rental rear crisis. While most state ERAP funding has now been applied to tenant balances, there is still around $448 million in arrears, up from $125 million in 2019. To close its budgets gap, NICA has announced new cuts, and I'm most alarmed by the wholesale cancellation of the unarmed security guards after 55 senior developments across the city, which is set to take effect on July 1st. The annual cost of this key safety program is $6.8 million, a drop in the bucket amidst NICA's $5 billion operating budget. With so many other places to cut from revenues and savings, the change is a nonstarter for me. No doubt, my committee colleagues will also share their views today as we work to restore this program and defend public housing's tenants. Finally, I would like to thank the Public Housing Committee staff, who have helped to prepare this hearing, Dan, Connor, Jose, my Chief of Staff, Michael Lambert, and the District Office staff. With that, I will now pass it back to Chair Brennan.
Thank you, Chair Banks. Before we get started, I also want to take a quick moment to thank the entire Council Finance Division staff, who works very, very hard this time of year behind the scenes to prepare for these hearings, today especially to Jack Story and Dan Croup, my Committee Counsel Mike Toomey, my Senior Advisor John Yett, and all the finance analysts back at Mission Control who make this all possible. As a reminder, for this year's Executive Budget Joint Hearings, we'll take public testimony on an agency's executive budget that same day after the agency witnesses have finished, instead of holding one day for all public testimony, as we've done in the past. So if you're here today and you wish to speak on the NICA executive budget after the NICA panel, please fill out a witness slip with the Sergeant-at-Arms. And I'll now turn it over to my Committee Counsel, Mike Toomey, to swear in the witnesses. I will also acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmembers Osay, Ayala, Abilis, Lewis, and Carr.
Good morning. Raise your right hands, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Lisa Bova Hyatt, Eva Trimble, Anika Lescot Martinez?
I do.
Sean Mivani. Thank you, you may begin.
Thank you. Chairs Chris Banks and Justin Brennan, members of the Committees on Public Housing and Finance, other distinguished members of the City Council, NICA residents, community advocates, and members of the public, good morning. I am Lisa Bova Hyatt, NICA's Chief Executive Officer. I am pleased to be joined by Chief Operating Officer Eva Trimble, Executive Vice President of Finance and Chief Financial Officer Anika Lescot Martinez, Chief Asset and Capital Management Officer Sean Mivani, and other members of NICA's team. NICA's adopted budget was approved by its Board of Directors in December. Thank you for this opportunity to provide updates on NICA's fiscal outlook for 2024, as well as our work to transform our organization and improve residents' quality of life. Making the best use of the limited funding available to improve living conditions for NICA residents is at the forefront of our mission. As we discussed with the council in March, during the preliminary budget hearing, we are grappling with significant rent arrears, which have made NICA's fiscal predicament more dire. Rent payments are one-third of NICA's operating budget, funding that is vital to the efforts to repair and maintain NICA developments. This is an especially critical situation, considering that our aging buildings have nearly $80 billion in major capital needs, the result of decades of federal disinvestment. However, thanks to the commitment of partners like Mayor Adams, Governor Hochul, and the state legislature to the well-being of public housing residents and the future of this agency, NICA has received $147 million in ERAP funding to date. We have applied $145 million to residents' accounts, and will continue to credit residents' accounts as funds are received. Thanks in part to the ERAP funding, rent arrears have decreased since last year and are stabilizing. Additionally, the state budget has recently appropriated $140 million to NICA for capital projects. We will engage with state stakeholders to program these funds in the coming months. And we were allocated $379 million in expense funds and $1.4 billion in capital funds, including funding for our PAC program from the city this year, City Fiscal Year 2025, through the executive plan. We are incredibly grateful for this support, which will go a long way in stabilizing the authority's finances and enabling the repairs that residents deserve. In terms of federal funding, based on preliminary information, we expect that we will receive about $4.961 billion in operating revenues. To help close our $35 million operating deficit for 2024, we will continue to closely monitor our spending and revenues and implement cost-saving measures as necessary. We received a $754 million federal capital grant in 2023, $43 million more than in 2022, and are still awaiting notification of our 2024 grant. We appreciate the efforts of New York's congressional delegation to raise awareness about the imperative to provide funding for public housing. NICA's Section 8 program is sufficiently funded. We expect to receive about $1.89 billion for Section 8 vouchers and the associated administrative fees this year. NICA is receiving the previous year's expenses plus a Section 8 administrative fee that is estimated to be prorated by 90%. Our outlook regarding expenses has not changed. We continue to make strategic investments with the limited funding available to address the mandates of the HUD agreement and improve living conditions for residents. I must stress that NICA's finances are still precarious. We are only collecting about 71% of the rent owed, and rental arrears currently stand at $448 million, a $344 million increase from 2019, and well beyond the ERAP funding that NICA residents will receive. For these reasons, we continue to advocate for additional federal and state funding beyond ERAP to help address the shortfalls in our operating budget. Given the widening gap between operating expenses and revenues, NICA is implementing various cost-cutting measures to reduce expenses, such as decreasing property staff through attrition as developments convert through PAC, reducing central office expenses while reallocating the funding to essential services and prioritizing property management funding, and implementing overtime control measures. Capital funding also remains insufficient, and we continue to advocate for additional capital funding from the federal and state government. While the capital funding we receive is a fraction of the investments, repairs, and upgrades our buildings need, we are making a difference for residents with the funding we do receive. Last year, we expended over $1.1 billion on capital projects, completed construction for 100 projects, and also initiated over 100 projects. More than 600 capital projects are currently underway across the city, and we are targeting $1.5 billion in expenditure and completion of 150 projects this year. Five city council-funded projects that we had to pause last year due to staffing constraints have been restarted, and we plan to restart the remainder of the paused projects beginning in July and over the following 12 months. During our conversation with the council at the preliminary budget hearing, we discussed a range of efforts underway to become a better landlord for residents and strengthen this vital institution so that it can continue providing affordable housing to future generations of New Yorkers. These efforts include housing preservation initiatives such as PAC, the Public Housing Preservation Trust, and comprehensive modernization, which will bring revitalized homes and improved building services from elevators to heating to residents. We are also focused on improving the way we operate, bringing faster and more efficient repairs through transformation plan initiatives such as work order reform and the neighborhood model. We are making progress with these initiatives, and we are happy to answer any questions about our work that you may have. Thank you, as always, for your partnership in our shared mission of service to NICA residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I've also been joined by Councilmembers Williams, Stevens, Botcher, Sanchez, and Moya on Zoom. The first line of your testimony is troubling just because it doesn't raise eyebrows, making the best use of the limited funding available to improve living conditions for NICA residents. Can you just sort of, as we get started, outline for us how NICA sees the federal disinvestment over the years, or at least since you've been in charge?
Thank you very much for that question, Councilmember. Over the last 10 years, we've been underfunded by $480 million in the public housing program and $200 million in the Section 8 program.
All right, wait. So over the last 10 years, so 10 years ago, you were getting $480 million more than you're getting now from the federal government?
No.
What did you?
$480 million is what we should, additional funding that we should have received over 10 years that we did not receive.
Right, okay.
And it's important to note that 10 years ago, you know, it was to the tune of $100-plus million a year, and as time has gone on, they've started to catch up.
As time goes on, you're what?
They've started to catch up, in terms of providing...
So 10 years ago, you were averaging about $100 million a year from the federal government?
The shortfall.
I don't know where we're...
The shortfall was $100 million.
Okay, and where are you at now?
The shortfall in 2023 is actually $97 million, and in 2024 is $113 million in operating subsidy alone.
So when compiling its 2024 budget, NICA reviewed $270 million in pillar area funding requests. It approved $176 million and denied $94 million, citing a lack of funding. The denied requests included projects to address heating, elevators, environmental hazards, pest and waste management. Could you tell us, did NICA go back to the administration and request this pillar area funding?
We continue to work with our city partners to, you know, provide additional funding for our residents. The city already provides, in 2024 alone, $1.9 billion across operating and capital sources. And of that amount, there's a significant amount there for the HUD pillar areas through the city capital funding.
OMB has made major investments in schools and jails as part of its capital plan. Were you told the city had no additional debt capacity to support public housing in this plan?
We were not told that by anyone.
What were you told?
We did not have a conversation with the city about their debt capacity.
You didn't have a conversation with the city about the debt capacity as it relates to more funding for capital?
I had no conversation with the city about debt capacity.
But the administration never said your capital might be in danger because of our debt limit?
The city worked with us on our city capital funding. There was funding that needed to be reallocated, and we did that. We also worked with them to, you know, stretch our city capital funding depending on our project timelines. We did not have any specific conversation about the city debt limit with anyone.
Okay, the FY25 state enacted budget includes $140 million in new capital funds. Can you detail for us some of the types of capital projects that that money will fund?
Thank you, Chair Brennan. So that funding was announced a few weeks back. We're in the process of engaging state stakeholders to determine where the best use of that funding moving forward. In 2023, state allocations were used for things like envelope improvements, so facade repairs of our brickwork, heating systems, and in previous, state allocations have been heavily focused on the HUD pillar areas, our heating systems and our elevators. But the state processes after the appropriation is made, there's a number of steps we go through to engage with the legislature and other state agencies to determine how that funding can be utilized in terms of the types of capital improvements and the locations of those.
Do you think you'd have an idea of what that'll go towards?
Traditionally, that process is quite lengthy. We, in previous couple of years, have been able to really work with the state to move that very quickly. I would guess, you know, by the end of the year, we'd have clarity and ideally move towards what's called a grant-disbursement agreement when that money actually becomes available to us.
Okay. I'll talk about the elimination of the unarmed security guards. So NICA has announced that it's canceling its unarmed security guard service at 55 senior developments across the city on June 30th, which will be the end of FY24. Total expense budget for this is $5 billion. The annual cost for security at the 55 senior developments is just $6.8 million. Why is NICA proposing this as a cut rather than making deeper reductions to its central office staff or to overtime?
Thank you, Councilmember. I want to start by saying we recognize that there is no good budget cut out there. We've had to face a series of trade-offs as part of this budget process. As our CFO will mention, the budget that was adopted by our Board of Directors in December included a $35 million deficit, and so all of these cuts that we had to make were just to get to that $35 million deficit number. The approximately $7 million for the unarmed security guards program is across 55 buildings, 55 senior buildings, and again, there's no good trade-offs. We have also made other cuts within our central office. We've made changes to our program operations in order to retain as much staffing and services to our residents as possible, and this was just one among a series of cuts that we've had to make.
Did NICA request that the administration baseline the cost of the security guards as a new need to prevent that cut?
No.
Why not?
We worked with the city on various proposals regarding our funding, and we, as Eva mentioned, we did the best that we could with the funding that we had, both from our federal, city, and state partners.
What were some of the things that you decided to keep instead of cut?
Well, first and foremost, we kept services related to maintaining and operating our aging buildings. It's important to note that year over year, the NICA budget is actually increasing by $300 million because there are various nondiscretionary costs that we cannot cut. For example, our utilities increased from $600 to $643 million. That's additional $40 million on utility costs across the entire portfolio that we don't have discretion over and must provide. So that's just one example. We also have various HUD-required insurance programs and other requirements, basic requirements and core requirements as a landlord that we had to keep.
Wouldn't security be one of those core requirements as a landlord?
Right now, we are laser-focused on our requirements, providing heat, hot water, elevators, everything that's required of us by the HUD agreement. Security is not one of them.
Okay. I know better than anybody that the peanuts add up after a while, but $6.8 million for security at senior developments in NICA seems like something that should have been prioritized, seems like something we're going to have to fight over, that, you know, we could be spending time fighting over other things. The one thing that concerns me is that unlike 2023, the 2024 budget makes no withdrawal from NICA's reserves. Why can't NICA bank on similarly improved finances by year's end or just make a withdrawal from the reserves to keep those security guards?
That's a really good question. So it's important to note that in 2023, we did pass a budget with a $65 million withdrawal from our reserve. We received $100 million from the state ERAP program, and that was a watershed moment for us. So when the 2023 budget was passed, at that time, the state had not yet changed their prioritization of NICA residents, and we had no idea that we were going to receive that funding. But as a matter of practice, we have to learn how to operate on the revenue that we bring in. It's not financially prudent to use our operating reserves every year to do what we know to be a planned expense. So as you mentioned, you know, it is really difficult. There is no cut alone that brings us to balance, but together, they do start to add up. And the 2023 budget is already in a $35 million deficit, so we have to find, before year end, $35 million just to end on balance, and that is our first priority. And we're going to closely monitor our budget and our revenues in order to get there. We also may have unplanned emergencies that we also need to contend with, and so we have to be very careful about the use of our reserves.
Yeah, it just seems penny-wise, pound-foolish. $6.8 million for something like security guards at 55 senior developments? I don't see how that doesn't end up back in the budget at the end. The budget dance is a waste of time for everybody, especially New Yorkers. I just don't, I don't understand that cut at all. The council's preliminary budget response called for $584 million for NICA capital projects and staffing to align with the mayor's 2021 commitment to fund NICA, including PAC, at $1.5 billion a year. Unfortunately, the executive capital plan included no new resources for NICA. Can you describe some of the projects that are in the NICA capital pipeline? Can you describe some of the projects that are in the NICA capital pipeline?
Sure, thank you, council member. So our current active portfolio, as Lisa mentioned, is above six hundred projects, actually closer to six hundred and fifty. More than half of those projects are in construction, and more than half of that budget amount. It's about six hundred, six billion dollars of active budget that we're currently implementing. The major areas where we have projects are, as mentioned, the HUD pillars, so heating systems, elevators, waste management, roofs and facades, but also energy efficiency. We do make significant capital investments in safety and security as well. Green infrastructure, community centers, and grounds. Our future pipeline, in terms of planned investments in the next few years, based on city commitments and anticipated federal funding, is similarly focused on heating, waste management, safety and security, community center and grounds, and resiliency investments, as you mentioned earlier, from I D A-related funding and other resources.
Could you tell us how many discretionary projects? For things, you know, we talk about heat and hot water like it's some great amenity. How many discretionary projects, like playgrounds, community centers, security cameras, have been delayed in the past year?
Sure, it may be helpful just to understand the discretionary portion of our portfolio and then jump into your question. So amongst those six hundred and fifty active projects we have today, about two hundred and fifty of them have some form of city funding, whether that's a mayoral allocation or it is discretionary funding from council members or borough presidents or other sources. Those two hundred and fifty projects with city funding have a budget upwards of a billion dollars. Within that, we have a hundred and ten discretionary-funded projects with a budget of about seventy-five million dollars. And within those hundred and ten, thirty-five are what you refer to as delayed or projects that we put on pause since March of two thousand and twenty-three or later during the year with a budget of about thirty-five million dollars.
Okay. The executive budget includes thirty point seven million dollars in federal disaster recovery funds from Hurricane Ida, reflecting back on the lag in receiving funds for these kind of things. Hurricane Sandy was twelve years ago. And deeply impacted many NICA communities, especially my own in Coney Island, we're still grappling with that. Can you share, how many of the Hurricane Sandy projects are still ongoing? And how many have been completed citywide?
Sure, so the Sandy program was focused on investing in restoration and resiliency at thirty-five NICA developments. The Sandy projects at twenty-five of those developments, all major construction and items were completed. So that means we have a remaining ten developments where work is ongoing. The work at those sites is anywhere between seventy percent and ninety-nine percent complete in terms of construction activities.
Where are those ten developments?
I can give you a full list of those, just give me a moment. So Sandy work is still active at Barook Houses, at Hamel Houses, at Red Hook East and West, three Coney Island developments, so Dwyer Surfside and Coney Island Site Eight, Cary Gardens, Metro North, and Haber Houses.
Okay, that's a lot of Coney Island. Let's talk about the NICA vacancy readiness program. NICA had previously shared it wants to target three thousand units for renovation annually. Where are you in terms of that target year-to-date in F Y twenty-four?
Thank you, council member. I'm happy to report that so far in this fiscal year, we've had just over twenty-six hundred move-ins through the vacant readiness program.
How does that match up to years past?
This year, we've increased our production, as we've spoken about in these hearings. We've had forty percent more move-ins this year over last year.
What's the average cost of an apartment renovation currently?
On average, it's costing us about forty-five thousand dollars a unit.
Okay, I just have a few more, then I want to give it over to my chair and my colleagues. The rental arrears and evictions. Tenant rent arrears, I think you noted, still total about four hundred and fifty million despite the application of a hundred and forty million in state ERAP funds. Although ERAP has helped manage the crisis, arrears remain well above two thousand and nineteen level of a hundred and twenty-five million. How much is left to be applied from the state ERAP?
Two million dollars.
And so, and say again, I think you may have said in your testimony, but what is NICA's anticipated rental arrears for the end of F Y twenty-four?
We don't make projections about arrears, we would like for our arrears to be zero.
And we, so would I, but that's not reality. We don't have a projection of what that would look like?
We do not project arrears.
Okay, there's an article in Politico this morning from Maya Kaufman about the Reese Houses. It's home to about four thousand New Yorkers in the East Village. After waking up each morning with swollen eyes and hair falling out in clumps, NICA resident Shalitha Hill landed in the emergency room with suspected arsenic poisoning back in March. A urine sample showed arsenic levels of a hundred and seventeen micrograms per liter, which is more than double the threshold, triggering a report to the state. Ms. Hill was treated in an emergency room for symptoms, quote-unquote, "symptoms concerning for arsenic toxicity", according to medical records that were shared with the publication. Ms. Hill is not alone. Several neighbors in Reese Houses share her concern, and they feel that tap water is to blame. I understand that the administration is still awaiting the findings of the D O I probe into another water contamination scare at Reese in two thousand and twenty-two, where tests were positive for unsafe levels of arsenic. I think at the time, NICA contended it was a false positive based on a lab error and that retesting found little to no trace of arsenic. So will NICA, or has NICA agreed to retest the water at Reese Houses to ensure that there's no arsenic in the water?
Thank you for that question. NICA has tested over five hundred water samples from Reese Houses for arsenic and other parameters. There is not, and was never, any arsenic in the water supply there. All samples met the water quality standards for arsenic and conclusively show that there is no water quality concern in the drinking water at Reese Houses. We understand that D E P tested the water as late as April of two thousand and twenty-four, and both showed a non-detect for arsenic.
Residents that say they're still getting sick, have we tested their apartments specifically?
There's no need to test their apartments. Their water comes directly from the water supply. There is no water tank, it comes directly from the main.
And is there any way, other way that these symptoms could be explained?
I am not a doctor. I don't know if you've had your hearing with D O H M H. I'm sure that they can provide more information regarding this, but I do understand that arsenic is a naturally occurring element that can be achieved from either smoking or fish or other items, but that's really a question for D O H M H.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Chair Banks. Quickly, we've been joined by council members Mealy and Hudson, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. I just want to, before I start my line of questioning, I just want to recognize the seniors from the Vandelia Senior Center. I also want to recognize the seniors from Cardigy Woodson. Good to see you. And I believe, I don't know if any seniors came from Mount Arro, but that's from my neighbor and colleague, Darlene Mealy's district, from Mount Arro. Thank you for coming out. And thank you again, CEO Bova, for coming today. I just want to get straight to it. The cuts to the, or the elimination of the unarmed security guard program. Obviously, this is something that is disheartening, disappointing. And to me, again, to agree with my colleague, it makes no sense. If security on NICA campuses has been a shared responsibility for a decade, what's the change?
Thank you, council member. Again, the security guard program right now provides, for the most part, one eight-hour shift of an unarmed security guard. All but six developments and buildings already have CCTV cameras. And in addition, we've notified each of the relevant precincts or P S A's of our programmatic change. We're working closely with them to make sure there's additional patrols. And even though NICA is eliminating this program, we've done a lot through our Office of Safety and Security and our partnership with N Y P D to expand safety and security programs for all of our residents in all of our buildings, over two thousand buildings across NICA's portfolio. This includes having patrols with DHS and N Y P D together to patrol for, in our buildings, for homeless, homeless folks that are, that may be in the buildings and offering them services. We are now doing a comprehensive development and safety and security assessment of every building along with resident associations, walking the buildings, identifying risks and security hazards, and coming up with plans to address them. And we've been working closely with N Y P D to remove illegal micro-mobility devices. So we're working closely with N Y P D on all aspects of safety and security across our entire portfolio.
Would you agree that cameras are not enough to secure our seniors?
I am not a safety and security expert. I work with N Y P D on comprehensive security measures, but CCTV is an important tool in that safety, in that safety toolbox. We are, we work closely with N Y P D to provide them video and camera footage as needed. We've been able to use that to apprehend perpetrators in our buildings. So it is a very important tool for us.
Well, I believe it was about five years ago or so at Woodson Houses, Cardigy Woodson, we had close to four to five seniors who were murdered. And there were, I believe there were no cameras at that time. And there's been issues, I know at Vandelia Houses, for the last five years. They haven't even had a security guard or security or boots on the ground at that particular development. So I want to know, with Vandelia particularly, where has that money been going? Because it was news brought to me at a town hall meeting that I held yesterday that they haven't had security, physical security, at the development for the last five years. So I want to know where was that money, where has that money been going?
I'm not familiar with a, with an issue with our, with our guard at Vandelia.
There's no guard at the.
I, I will look into that situation. We do, do checks on our guards to make sure they're showing up. So I will look into that situation and get back to you.
Well, as part of the city's focus on public safety, shouldn't senior buildings be a priority?
As I said, we work closely with N Y P D on all of our buildings. The various, you know, resources that we've been able to bring, including DHS in order to do walk downs of the buildings and provide services, the N Y P D for removing micro-mobility devices, and we are working with resident associations in order to do our own comprehensive development, safety and security checks.
Would you agree that having boots on the ground as a security guard is the first line of defense?
I, they're, they're, N Y P D is definitely the first line of defense for criminal activity. I don't deny that this is an important program. We've had, and as I mentioned before to Chair Brennan's question, there is no good budget cut that we've, that we've been happy about having to make, but we've been, we've had to make difficult choices in this budget to get to our thirty-five million dollar deficit. And unfortunately, this was one of the areas where we felt through our partnerships with N Y P D and other activities that.
And this has been, you have discussed this with O M B?
Yes, they're aware of this change.
Okay, do you know how much money other agencies are spending annually on NICA, such as the F D N Y, N Y P D, D O T?
We do not know, and I think it's, that question is best posed to the city or those agencies directly.
Are you, are any developments going to lose any hours of security guard coverage when the one point five million new need for current fiscal year?
I'm sorry, can you?
I said, are any developments going to lose any hours of security guard coverage, even with the one point five million new need for current, for the current fiscal year?
So the one point five million that was provided by O M B to help support, to keep these guards on actually through July first. So, as I mentioned, O M B is aware of this proposed change in our budget. And they did provide us one point five million dollars to keep the guards on from January through the end of June, while we continue to look at other options, see how the budget played out. And so that money has, essentially, will have already been spent by the end of June, and that is why July first is our cutoff date for the guards.
Would you agree that one point, sorry, six point seven or six point eight million dollars is a minuscule amount of monies compared to the entire city budget?
We think that every dollar is significant. And as Eva mentioned, there's really no good, there's no good way to close a budget. And so we've just done the best that we could, but every dollar is significant.
Once again, would you, are you prioritizing seniors or the fifty-five senior developments when it comes to providing security?
As Eva mentioned, we have worked with our various partners at N Y P D. We have worked on getting CCTV cameras. And so we really have, you know, worked to get other items in our toolkit up and running, and we have done that across our entire portfolio. So security and safety is a priority for us across our entire portfolio.
There are about six developments that currently have no cameras in the fifty-five developments throughout the entire city. If you completely now cut the security guards that they do have, would you agree that now those six developments will have no security apparatus to protect them?
They, while they do not have cameras or guards, they still have support from N Y P D and our partnerships with N Y P D.
That's not enough.
P S A's.
It's not enough.
Order to provide safety and security.
It's not enough. We've seen issues with response times, and we know that the senior walking into a building and a security guard standing at the door, standing in that area can be a deterrent. So I fundamentally disagree with that, totally shifting everything to N Y P D. In previous financial plans, the administration shifted funding from the vacant unit readiness program from the expenses to, to the capital budget to generate savings. Why not swap additional vacant unit readiness funding to create capacity in the expense budget for the security guards?
We do not make those decisions regarding the swaps. We are told, you know, that we have to shift expense to capital. We work with O M B on a list of projects, but we are not, you know, the ones making a decision in the city budget about swapping from expense to capital.
Okay, are you certain that there will be, there will not be underspending in the vacant unit readiness funding line that could be used to fund these guards or the guards?
We do our best to spend all the funding that is given to us in any given year. And as Eva mentioned, we have increased our production. We do now have a C P for our city capital for the vacant unit readiness program, as well as an approved R T P for the expense funding. So we are going to try our best to spend on all the funding.
All right, I, I'm frustrated that the priority is not given to our seniors. And some, you know, when, when folks draft a budget, it, it shows their intent. It shows the clarity of how they prioritize things. And obviously, it's shown that this administration is not prioritizing our seniors. Six point seven million dollars should be, it should be a foregone thought to make sure that our seniors are protected and that layer of security is there. And this is a slap in the face of folks who have paved the way for us and who, who deserve to be prioritized. They're living their, in their golden years, and we have to, we have to fight for six point seven billion dollars. It's disappointing, it's troubling, and obviously, it, it, it's frustrating. I want to move on to the RAD PAC. NICA states that it is on track to include sixty-two thousand apartments in the PAC program, which aims to bring. which aims to bring comprehensive apartment repairs and building upgrades to more than 140,000 residents. NITRA's website says over 20,000 homes have received repairs or in progress. How many NITRA buildings are scheduled to be converted into the PAC in fiscal year 2024, 2025, and 2026?
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Jonathan Gavia, Executive Vice President of Real Estate Development. So we have converted just under 21,000 units as of the end of last calendar year. And we've got another 17,000 units that are in our pre-development stage. So we have selected development teams. Those teams are developing their scopes of work, and we are moving towards the conversions. So we're going to continue to work with our PAC partners, OMB and others, to schedule each of those closings through the balance of 2024, 2025, and 2026, as you noted.
Could any development or closing fees, as the private developer comes into the, to manage, help offset NITRA's deficit, the closing fees?
They may, and that has happened in the past. The issue is that those things are hard to predict. So we don't know our fee schedule until the deal is actually closed. And once we have that fee schedule, then we do include it in our budget as an other revenue item.
Well, NITRA has previously said it recognizes revenue conservatively. What is NITRA's track record on, on under or over budgeting the PAC-related development fees?
So we're pretty on target because, again, we wait until we receive the closing documents in order to put them into the budget. They really do differ from deal to deal. Whether you get it as soon as the deal is closed or you can get it over time. So over five years or three years. So we wait until we have those deal documents signed and the deal is completed, and then we include them into the budget.
So currently, are there any examples where a conversion has taken place or the closing has taken place and the fee has taken longer than a year or two? Can you name specific examples?
I cannot name specific examples, but there are deals where fees are earned over time. And there are deals where you might receive fees upfront. So yes, there are examples of both.
Where it has been, it has delayed, it's been over a year.
I would not say it's delayed, it's in the deal document that you will earn, you know, the developer fee as soon as you close the deal. And then over time, you might receive, you know, fees upon cash flow of the building or what have you. So those are very clearly spelled out in every single deal. And then they're put into the budget based on the year in which they're expected.
All right. The executive capital commitment plan only includes capital funds for PAC through fiscal year 2026. Is there realistic, is it realistic to think that all the 62,000 apartments will have renovations completed by fiscal year 2026?
So to clarify, our commitment was actually to convert 62,000 by 2028, so not necessarily have the construction complete by 2028. So we are working towards making sure that we can achieve that goal of converting all 62,000 by the end of 2028. And we, as I mentioned earlier, we're continuing to work with all our partners to make sure that we're getting the best scopes for the best price and working with OMB to make sure that we can be supported along the way.
So when does NITRA intend to reach its goal of the 62,000 unit, 62,000 apartments in the PAC?
By 2028.
And is there enough capital funding to support these conversions of the 62,000 apartments?
As I said, we are continuing to work with our PAC partners to scope out each of the projects to make sure that there's sufficient funding for each of the deals. And we're continuing to work with OMB over time to make sure that by 2028, we can get these deals closed.
I have just a few more questions, and I'm going to pass it back to my, to the chair. And when it comes to staffing and attrition, part of NITRA's deficit closing strategy includes reducing staff through attrition. The budget reflects 12,108 positions in 2024, decreasing to 11,292 positions in 2027, which is a 6.7% decrease. There are currently 11,401 active staff at NITRA. Can you provide an update on if any staff outside of the PAC developments have been attributed so far as part of the savings plan?
So our attrition rate, three-year average, is 14%. So we do attrit a large number of staff over time. And we will use attrition as one of the strategies, the main strategy, to get us to our budget amount.
So what percentage of the redeployed NITRA staff stay in the same borough where they previously worked?
Thank you, council member. Leading up to a projected closing and transfer of a PAC, of a development in the PAC program, we work closely with our HR department to see how many staff will be, need to be transferred. And we look at current vacancies, both near that site as well as in the overall borough. We also work to minimize travel hardships and ensure that staff have a pick of where they want to go. So we work closely with each staff member to reassign them to existing vacancies as close as possible to their current location.
Well, in the 2025 plan, it's set to remove 632 positions, a 5.2 decrease from 2024. What is the anticipated savings?
Sure, happy to take that question. So the variance from 2024 to 2025, as you mentioned, is 632 positions. But if you notice, on a net basis, salary and fringe year over year actually increased by $17 million.
All right. Well, does NITRA anticipate a turnover or to slow or recruitment to improve, given the new collective bargaining agreements funded with the 185.8 million across the plan?
Yeah, I mean, we've had collective bargaining agreements in our history, pretty traditionally. And yet, and still, our attrition rate stays around a, you know, for the three-year average is 14%. It can be still upwards of 10%. So we don't think that collective bargaining alone is a major factor that is going to completely change our attrition rate at the agency.
Is there any attrition planned for the central office, central office roles? Okay. And is resident engagement going to see fewer staff?
So in our adopted budget, resident engagement headcount is 200 million. I'm sorry, 200 staff. I do not have the 2025 number with me, so sorry about that.
If you can get that to us, please. The Department of Investigations recommended that NITRA institute a centralized contract oversight unit to correct its micro purchasing procurement process. NITRA accepted these recommendations. Has this unit, well, has this unit estimated to cost 6.1 million now been incorporated within the 2024 operating budget?
Yes, it has.
And how many new staff will be required and how else will the money be spent?
Sure. So the 6.1 million includes two main things. The first is 37 staff, 29 in operations, and eight in procurement. And it also includes a $344,000 vendor integrity review contract as required.
How long is it going to take to launch this?
So we are already in progress. We have the postings up for those positions, and we are hiring expeditiously.
And who, who will fund the, the unit ultimately? For example, would it be done by HUD or will it be, or will it be the city?
So no specific funder. We've added it to our budget, and we will fund it as we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Turn it, turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chair. We've also been joined by council members Salamanca and Powers. And we're going to start with questions from Brooks Powers, followed by Ayala.
Thank you. I have quite a number of questions for you, Chair. We've been waiting to see you in Rockaway. I know the last time we saw each other was at the ribbon cutting for the Redfern Houses Park. And we were looking forward to the tour that you had committed to join. We hope that you'll be able to make it there. So a few things. One, vacancy. In the NITRA developments in Rockaway in particular, we're seeing a significant number of vacant apartments that have now been overtaken by squatters and drug dealers, creating great safety concerns for my residents in the NITRA developments. I'd like to know what steps NITRA has taken to address this. Also wanting to understand, globally speaking for NITRA, what is the number that you've identified in terms of squatters in these vacant apartments? Has NITRA had to take any of them to court to properly evict them? And what does that dollar tag look like? Also, a number of our entrance front doors are broken. And I'd like to know, how does NITRA track the number of doors that are broken and what the average length of time it takes for the repairs? And does this budget account for being able to repair all of the doors that are currently broken? Also, I represent a coastal community. A lot of our developments were impacted by Superstorm Sandy. Wanted to know, are any heating and cooling systems planned for updates? The last time we had a tour by a NITRA chair was with Chair Russ. And at that time, we were told that our cooling systems were old. And so wanting to know, has NITRA begun to take any steps to address that? In the wintertime in particular, we see a lot of complaints in terms of not having hot water or heat in a number of our developments. Also, funding was received to repair two ocean side playgrounds on Beach Channel Drive at Beach 56th Street and Beach 54th Street. I'd like to know who the contractor is working on that project. I'd like to know, has that contractor been paid in full to date? And I'd like to also know, why has this project exceeded the projected date of completion? And then finally, emergency transfers. We have been seeing a significant delay in emergency transfers for folks who have endured some level of violence. And wanting to understand what the average timeline is for moving someone with an emergency transfer and how NITRA is working to move this along. And I'll close with my questions by extending, once again, an invitation for you to visit our NITRA developments in the 31st Council District because my residents are eager to meet you in person. Thank you.
Thank you so much, council member. I'm happy to have Brian Honan and Emma coordinate with your office. It was great seeing you at that ribbon cutting, and I'm happy to come out there again. I think what we'll do is maybe we'll start from left to right. And I'll turn it over to my colleague Sean to talk about the Sandy projects and the playgrounds.
Thanks so much. So one of your questions was around heating and cooling and resiliency investments. We put out our capital plan and specific projects planned at each site publicly. We have a live part of our website called the Capital Projects and Needs Tracker, where any member of the public, a resident or others, council members and your staff can go and look and see what projects are planned for each site for the next two years, including heating, cooling, and other projects. I don't have the full plan for the next five years right in front of me, but we can follow up and provide you if there are any allocations that we already have made for future funding to go to heating or cooling investments.
In the current two-year one, are any located in Rockaway?
So I don't have that capital plan in front of me, but we can definitely follow up with that.
It'd be great to know before the hearing is out.
Okay, I'll try to, we'll try to get that information if we can, or along with the other follow-up from the hearing, provide that to you. In terms of the specific playground issues, we've had challenges around performance of the contractor, material installation delays. The material is being installed.
Who is the contractor?
I'm just trying to get that name for you off of our tracker. But we do anticipate the work completing this month and the fence being taken off in May and becoming publicly accessible and usable again. And if there have been, you know, performance issues with the contractor that contractually allows us to recoup funding or make a claim, you know, we pursue that whenever that's the case.
Has that contractor been paid in full?
Not yet, no. The contractor would not be paid in full until the work is fully completed, accepted by my staff as well as by the property. We also take resident leaders on punchless process typically nowadays for completed work to make sure everybody's comfortable with the quality of the work and the output only after all of that and the area becomes accessible for use again. Then we go through a process with contractors that's called a closeout process, which is a three to six month process where we make a final payment based on, you know, everything that's happened, any type of changes, any type of performance issues. So those final payments, that contractor wouldn't happen till late this year.
It'd be great to expedite that because we're in year two, and we keep on getting these end dates that haven't come to fruition yet. And I still like the contractor's name.
Yeah, we'll get all that information to you.
Thank you. Council member, you had asked about, I'll start with the broken doors. And I will, after this, our team will follow up separately with you to get the specific building addresses and so I can specifically address those conditions. But in general, our process is that our caretakers walk down their buildings every day, and they're supposed to report any broken doors to management in order for follow-up. For broken doors, we try as best as possible to make any repairs in-house, but very often, we do have to rely on vendors to come in because there's specialized equipment and materials involved. Our vendor process, we have a couple of different vendors onboard that, that work on doors. But depending on, we have many different types of doors throughout NITRA, and depending on the door, it may require different materials and follow-up from the vendors as well. And so we have to work, it's really a case-by-case process to, to actually address each and every door. But that is something that we have been hyper-focused on over the last year or so. And as I said, our caretakers are required to report all broken doors every single day as part of their walk downs. We've instituted a new program for our caretakers called muster mornings, where we've required that they fill out checklists and report that back to property management. And so this is part of our overall focus on the conditions in every single building.
That's great because we know where they are. But my concern is about getting them actually repaired. Is this budget going to help to address and make sure that these doors are being repaired?
Our contracts right now are funded to make these repairs, so it's just about getting materials and, and making sure that the repairs get done. So that's why I will follow up and get back to you on exactly where each of your doors and your developments are in that process. Regarding squatters, I agree, this is definitely an issue we've been hearing more about as well. I don't have a single reporting tool where every squatter is, so I can't tell you how many squatters we have right now across our portfolio. However, our, we've instituted a new protocol in partnership with both our law department and NYPD. Our property managers are reporting any assumed or, you know, possible squatting situations to our law department, and we're working with NYPD to research the situation. You know, sometimes people think it's squatters. It's maybe a remaining family member that we're still working on. So we really want to be careful as we research the family and the household before we take action. But we are working with NYPD and then, and if necessary, through the eviction process to remove squatters from our buildings.
And is it a dollar amount to when you have to do this and has NITRA had to do this?
We don't have a specific dollar amount just for this. It's part of our regular tenancy management work. Oh, thank you. And then you asked about emergency transfers. I, I don't have the, the average wait time right now for emergency transfers, but I can tell you, we have over 2,800 prospective tenants on our emergency transfer list right now.
Will you be able to get that for us?
Yes, we can follow up with you on that.
And thank you, Chair. The last thing I'll say is it would be great if we would be able to see an increase in hiring for staff with NITRA also in terms of keeping the grounds. I have relatively higher NITRA developments. And to have one person responsible for two of those buildings, it makes it extremely difficult and unfair to them to properly take care of the grounds that they would like to, in the way they would like to. And so seeing more staffing would, I think, help to address the cleanliness of the developments. And that also can be a deterrent in what we see in the hallways and what have you, and the stairwells in the buildings as well.
Now we have questions from Ayala, followed by Marte.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. I wanted to start off by saying that. I wanted to start off by saying that, you know, I heard a lot about the NYPD being used as a means to deter specific activities at NYCHA. And I want to just remind NYCHA that the NYPD is not NYCHA's private security. And I've had this conversation and said this many a times at hearings in the past. In any other housing situation, it is a landlord's responsibility to address, you know, their residence directly. And, you know, I am very cautious when it comes to including the NYPD and activities that are the landlord's responsibility to address. So I would like to know, since they're so heavily involved in the day-to-day policing of our public housing developments, what is the actual, how much of the budget goes towards the NYPD for this extra layer of security?
NYCHA does not pay the NYPD.
Oh, so they do it for free?
They do it as part of their policing of the city and in partnership with us.
All right. Could you explain what would you consider an NYPD-worthy call?
I would not opine on a worthy call. It's up to a resident to determine their safety and security and make, and take whatever action they need to feel safe.
I mean, but you mentioned several times in your testimony that you work hand-in-hand with the NYPD. What exactly is it that you're working hand-in-hand with the NYPD on?
We coordinate with NYPD on a couple of different policy initiatives and program initiatives. So as I mentioned, we have coordinated inspections with the Department of Homeless Services in order to look for homeless individuals in our buildings. We do cellar to roof inspections. Hopefully, if we find someone, we offer them services through DHS. We work closely with them, as I mentioned, on camera footage. We're also, you know, just closely coordinating regularly with PSA and precincts on activity going on. If there are special concerns at a building, we'll make sure that it's flagged so they'll do extra patrols, you know, just letting them know what's going on in our buildings generally.
I just want to make sure that NYCHA is not calling the cops on kids that are hanging out in the lobby because I consider that something that is the responsibility of the landlord to address. It is not a policing matter. And I want to remind you of the dangers of overpolicing black and brown communities and the history behind that. So I would hope that our public housing infrastructure is not complicit in those calls. Could you tell us how long you anticipate the capital projects that will put on pause to remain that way? And could you tell us what the main cause for the pause was? Is it a staffing issue, the number of capital projects, funding, or is it just a personal issue?
Thank you, Councilmember Ayala. So the pause that we started last March is impacting 35 city-funded projects currently. We had to do the pause because of a combination of the factors you mentioned, which are all related, inability to staff the large number of projects in our portfolio, which obviously relates to staffing budget and funding as well and overall capacity. Our portfolio has grown significantly over the last five years and was at the largest number of projects historically ever at over 800, you know, in late '22, early '23. And so pausing a number of projects was required to manage expectations with stakeholders about what we could deliver on what timeline and to ensure that the quality of work and safety and other components of each project we manage was, you know, up to par where we want it to be. We do, five of the projects that were paused last year have already been restarted for various reasons, because of timing of construction or things like that. The remaining 35, we are developing a plan to restart from this July through next July of '25. And we plan to restart all of the projects in sequence in that period, working with stakeholders, but also other considerations around access in the campus, where the work is happening, sequencing with other construction work happening at the property, you know, where the project is in terms of design work or procurement work that's required once we pick it back up, you know, staffing of the teams, et cetera. And so we'll be, we have been and will engage with residents, leaders, and other stakeholders in developing out that restart plan.
Can you remind me what the number of projected projects is to date?
The, sorry if you-
What is the number of projects that NYCHA has in totality, capital projects?
Currently, we have active just under 650 projects.
650, so how were the 35 selected?
The 35 were selected last year first based on, we cannot pause projects that are in construction already, given we already have a contractor, we have a legal contract, so that kind of reduced those projects. We then had to prioritize all of our HUD agreement pillars, compliance areas, anything impacting life or health safety directly, including safety and security type of projects. All of those projects we chose to continue. And that really left a small subset of projects, what you see as well paused today, which is largely where we receive discretionary funding for playgrounds, community centers, and other grounds type of work.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that at least there's a conversation to reconvene at some point because many of these projects had already begun the planning process and it left the resident, you know, leadership kind of, you know, up in the air because they had already started, you know, imagining the spaces and planning with NYCHA. So I appreciate that. Can you tell us how much of NYCHA's capital budget is intended to cover the cost of desperately needed kitchen appliances and new cabinets?
So kitchen appliances and cabinets are typically not capital expenditure and are not capital eligible under most capital funding sources.
So they're part of the expense budget?
When we're doing a one-off cabinet replacement or a kitchen appliance or as part of a turnover, traditionally they've been funded out of the expense side. If we're doing a full rehabilitation of a whole building and we're doing everything, including all the apartments, then those components would typically be part of the capital budget.
So how much, how much of the expense budget has been set aside for this?
Sure, so there's around $20 million for carpentry and that includes the kitchen cabinets, which we order in bulk.
And the appliances?
I do not have the appliances budget offhand.
Okay, can somebody get that to us?
Yes, we can.
I appreciate it, thank you. Do you know how much of the budget is set aside for renovating the vacant units? And how many units are you anticipating will be renovated this year?
Thank you. So the city has provided in this fiscal year 23, we've already received approval for 23.5 million in expense budget, of which we've already billed 8.3 million of that. In addition, we've received a CP for 54 million in city capital. Those are just part of the sources that have been made available this fiscal year, but we've gotten those approvals and we're starting to spend those down. And those support all of our vacant unit production. Everything we do now is, all of our vacant unit production is supported in some way by the city funding, which we're very grateful for. And we've done so far just over 2,600 units this fiscal year towards our goal of 3,000.
3,000, okay, okay. And can you tell us how much the administration allocated in this year's budget for NYCHA overall? And what will, and has NYCHA leadership made, has NYCHA leadership made an ask for additional operating dollars of the city?
Sure, so the city budget in fiscal year 2024 is 1.9 billion across capital and expense. And in fiscal year 2025, it's 1.6 billion dollars. And we continuously work with our city partners to request additional funding as needed and work on priorities.
Could you, and to that final question, could you tell us what NYCHA's policy is on addressing emergency repairs at developments that are set to transition to PACT and RAD? And is the elimination of the security guards at senior buildings a part of that?
Sure, so I can start with the first one, which is, as a property is set to go to PACT, it is still a NYCHA property and so we still address those emergency needs as they arise. We do not transfer sort of ownership partially and responsibility until there's an actual deal in place. So if an emergency arises and a property is set to be converted, it is still a NYCHA property and very much still our responsibility.
So I would love it if somebody could get back to me with an explanation on what happened at 335 East 111th Street because that was a building that was transitioned to PACT. And while we were in the midst of the pandemic, they had a water, the water damage in the mailboxes. And folks were not able to get access to their mail because the mailboxes were damaged for so long that the postal office was then sending mail back during the pandemic, which I found really just horrible because people were depending on, you know, letters from, you know, HRA, from other, you know, safety net programs. And I was told repeatedly that we were waiting on a vendor, waiting on a vendor, waiting on a vendor, waiting on a vendor. And the vendor did not come until such time as a transition happened. And the new landlord then, a new management, then purchased a new mailbox system. And so what you're saying is really just not consistent with what I'm seeing. So I would love to kind of, to better understand that before I cast any level of judgment. But I will say that this is something that has repeatedly been brought up to my office. I represent the largest public housing stock and I hear it a lot. People that have no ceilings in their bathrooms and, you know, we're looking for somebody, we're looking for somebody, and it seems like a stalling tactic until the new management takes over. So that is really concerning. And then finally, I would just add, you know, my two cents on the security issue situation. I find it really dangerous to, you know, it doesn't seem like a large amount of money. I think that is something that we could identify somewhere else in the budget. I, you know, was the pretend resident association president for two years of Corsi Houses because of the number of folks that were living in the staircases, that were pushing, doing push-in robberies at the development. And I remember in one incident, having the PSA captain present at one of those meetings, and he says, "This is the safest building. We don't get any calls from this building." And the reason they weren't getting calls is because the seniors were so afraid that somebody would find out that they had made that call and that would put themselves in, you know, a further dangerous situation that they didn't pick up the phone. And so I have always felt that NYCHA did a disservice by building these facilities, buildings where you have the most vulnerable population and then there are no social services, there are, there is no real adequate security. And now to eliminate the little bit that we do have is really detrimental. So it seems like a small thing. The security cameras at that same development at Corsi, you know, we funded the layered access system there. And I'll tell you that it's also not been what I was sold and told that it would be. So we have had many issues with that as well. And I really hope that, you know, this is an area where you would reconsider. Thank you.
Questions from Councilmember Marte followed by Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to add on to that point. You know, this budget dance of $6.8 million for security puts people's lives in danger and brings a lot of fear and mental insecurity to these seniors who are the most vulnerable. And it's ridiculous that as elected officials, we get this information from our TA presidents. NYCHA should have told us immediately if this was going to even be part of the budget table, right? And so it's concerning that I have residents in LaGuardia Edition texting me photos of a homeless man living in their lobby for two days after they called PSA for, when that has never happened before because they used to have security. And so this is the stress that we're putting on our most vulnerable when we should be trying to give them the best care possible. So just wanted to add that and really stress the point that it's almost ridiculous that we have gotten to this point where we're putting seniors pit against everything else, pit against, you know, vacancies, pit against staffing. Like we should do the very least to protect them, especially when it's just crumbs out of a $5 billion budget. My question is about the 5,000 vacancies that got dismissed reported in March. In your testimony, you said that you're currently working at 2,600 of those vacancies and your goal is to get to 3,000. When do you think you will achieve that goal this year?
Thank you, Councilmember. So we set the goal of 3,000 for this fiscal year. I think we hope to meet that before, by the end of the fiscal year as projected. We are doing just over 400 units a month right now in our production. However, the reason the overall number is not going down as much as we would like is because almost 60% of those move-ins are associated with transfers and not new admissions. So for every move-in that we have, another unit becomes vacant. So we're, our baseline is still staying fairly steady right now.
And so you think in the next two years, it will stay in that consistent level of around 5,000 vacancies because of these transfer and not move-ins? And what's the plan to do more recruitment from homeless shelters compared to just transfers?
I can't project on what the future vacancy will be. Our process for making selections is dictated by longstanding court protocols and precedents. And so our tenant selection program chooses the next tenant. Sometimes it's a transfer, depending on the apartment, sometimes it's a new admission.
And how many of these vacancies are going to be offloaded through PACT and RAD and other privatization avenues that NYCHA has taken?
I can't say exactly, however, in lead up to a PACT or other type of conversion and transfer, we do start taking units off the rent roll into a temporary off-the-rent-roll category in order to hold them for the conversion and order to facilitate relocations during the construction of the PACT project. So right now, the, you know, it's possible some of the vacancies in our pipeline are associated with future PACT conversions, but right now it's hard to say.
Okay, my last question, just to confirm this and get it on the record. So no capital project that has been funded is off limits, right? Will be started or there'll be ongoing work this fiscal year?
So just to correct that, what we said is that currently we have 35 city-funded projects paused that were paused last March or within a few months of that afterwards. We have an active portfolio of 650 projects. Those 35 projects, we're developing a plan to restart between July of this year and July of next year. So basically, in fiscal '25, we will restart all of those projects. You know, if we continue to receive new funding, which we're always looking for, you know, we have to manage that to our capacity. So it's possible in the future, we have more projects than we can manage. But right now, from what we know of city, federal, and other funding coming in, you know, we have that plan to restart all of those projects by the end of fiscal '25.
Thank you.
Questions from Salamanca. We've also been joined by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I want to follow up on my questioning from the last hearing that we had here with NYCHA on sidewalks. And I want to bring it up again. You know, for a private homeowner, a business, or a building owner, when their sidewalks are damaged, the Department of Transportation comes in, gives you a warning, gives you time to correct the situation. And if that private owner chooses not to fix the issue or resolve the issue, they come in, they do the work, they give you a summons, and then they give you a bill. My question is, is NYCHA responsible for the sidewalks?
So my understanding, and we'll fully clarify this with our legal team offline, when we've run into this in the context of capital projects, typically NYCHA is not responsible once it's on the sidewalk and off of our property line. But it may vary based on certain circumstances.
So you do not consider the sidewalks part of your property line?
So thank you for that question. And sidewalks are very, very technical. Most of the NYCHA campuses were acquired by the City of New York by eminent domain and then transferred to NYCHA as a state entity. The city may have retained the sidewalks outside. So each development is probably different. If there is a specific development that you're interested, so within the campus, it would be our responsibility, but I believe outside of the campus, it would not be. But if there's a specific development that you have a question about, we can certainly, it would have to be done through a title search and we could work with the New York City Law Department or a private company. But sidewalks and streets are very, very hyper-technical when it comes to title two and responsibility four.
So during the winter months in front of my home, if I want to, if I do not clean the snow or clean the garbage, I get a summons, right? Isn't that the case with NYCHA? Aren't you responsible also for cleaning the snow in front of your sidewalk, of your buildings? The question, the reason that I'm getting at this question is, in Forest houses, for years, we saw that there were big potholes on these sidewalks. And in our last hearing, I brought up the issue. And what NYCHA's representative, what they said was that they're not responsible for their sidewalks, that's the Department of Transportation's responsibility. Well, I reached out to the Department of Transportation. And there seems to be some type of agreement that you have where if there is damage to the sidewalk, NYCHA is responsible. the sidewalk, NICA is responsible for notifying the Department of Transportation and they will come, they will fix it. And it looks like DOT knew that I was coming to this hearing because as I was walking in, they texted me some of the patchwork that they did in Forest Houses. And so my question in terms of sidewalks here, if that's the case, as you are transitioning with some of your RAD and PAC programs, are they going to be held to that same standard as NICA when it comes to fixing their sidewalks? Or is the Department of Transportation going to come in and give them a violation if their sidewalk is damaged? Or will it be the Department of Transportation's responsibility, since that is the agreement that they have with NICA?
Thank you for that question. I'm actually not aware of an agreement that we have with the Department of Transportation with respect to what they will do with a PAC partner. I think it's a question for the Department of Transportation.
I just feel that if you are, it's still your property and you're handing over, you know, you're bringing in RAD and PAC to be responsible for the maintenance of these buildings, that they too should be given the same liberty in terms of how you are, in terms of fixing sidewalks and in terms of the summonses and violations that they give. Since NICA subcontract, because that's what it is, you're subcontracting the Department of Transportation to fix your sidewalks, how much does NICA spend a year paying the Department of Transportation to actually fix your sidewalks?
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please say your name.
Thank you. My name is Brian Honig. So I don't have the total dollar amount, but in the beginning of the year, we do submit a list of the worst sidewalks within our portfolio. Forest Houses was not. But afterwards, brought to my attention by you, Councilmember, we did have several conversations with them. They did send out inspectors and it appears that they've done some work. So we are appreciative of that from the Department of Transportation. This is something that has always been in place. Department of Transportation has always been responsible for sidewalks. It is something that, you know, as long as NICA has been, you know, an authority, I have no other way, no one I know, and I've been with the authority almost 20 years, nobody I know, you know, within the authority knows of another way. Over the last few years, funding has increased in this area, I will say, which is good. We used to get maybe, I don't know, like one or $2 million a year, which is, which would be eaten up within, you know, the first month of the year. And now it is, I think it's closer to, DOT has the money.
Oh, okay.
So the money within DOT's budget. I don't know the exact dollar amount, but it is, there is a coordination between NICA and DOT on the worst sidewalks.
I'm going to end with this sidewalk conversation here. It's just frustrating to know that these sidewalks that are damaged are right in front of these developments' management offices. So your supervisor is stepping over the holes that are on the sidewalk on a daily basis. The supervisor supervisor is stepping over the, you know, these damaged sidewalks. And it seems as if I bring it up and I'm told, oh, you know, it's DOT's responsibility. And it's unfortunate that I had to call Monica Morales in PIX 11 News to get this address when I am here asking you to address this issue.
Councilmember, I will say, even before the story of Monica Morales, you know, had been brought up, you know, we were in conversations with DOT, you know, about this, and they were well aware of it. And we, and I would say they were very, very responsive and, you know, and promised to send out, you know, inspectors, and they did.
Well, I hope you hold that manager responsible who's actually physically sitting in that office every day, stepping over that broken sidewalk on a daily basis and just totally ignored it. My final question is, I want to know about vacant units. How many vacant units are offline at the moment?
Thank you, Councilmember. Right now, we have just over 5,000 vacant units available. That's what we're working on for turning over. But when you say offline, we do have an additional 1,900, almost 2,000 vacant apartments that we call temporarily off the rent roll, that we're holding off the rent roll either in anticipation of a modernization effort or they're being used for other, you know, there are other situations going on with those apartments.
And just for my own knowledge, what's the average cost when a tenant moves out and the unit becomes vacant and NICA comes in to paint, lead abatement, fixing of the cabinets, the floors? What's the average cost per unit?
Our average cost, all in, including the environmental work that needs to get done, the, all the repairs that need to get done, is about $45,000 a unit.
Wow. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have questions from, first, we've been joined by Councilmember Salam, and now we have questions from Councilmembers Hani, followed by Lewis.
Thank you so much, Chairs, and thank you for joining us. So as of this year, I now proudly represent three NICA campuses, Gowanus Houses, Wykoff Gardens, and Warren Street Houses. It's the first time that Council District 39 is now home to public housing campuses. And having started my career as a public housing tenant organizer, it's critically important to me that the developments in my district and, of course, across the city are fully and equitably funded. So both Gowanus Houses and Wykoff Houses are a part of the city's comprehensive modernization program in addition to St. Nicholas in Manhattan and Todd Hill in Staten Island. Can you confirm the total funding allocated to these comprehensive modernization projects? I have a set of questions, so if you could just pay attention. Is the city planning to expand the number of projects that are participating in Comp-mod and at what rate? And what funding sources are being leveraged for the existing Comp-mod programs and about, and how about future ones? And I'll let you respond to that before I move into some of the other questions about Comp-mod specifically.
Thank you, Councilmember Hani. So the Comp-mod program is a NICA program utilizing city funding as well as other sources to do large-scale renovations at several properties, as you noted, through use of capital grant funds. So the projects you mentioned at St. Nicholas, Todd Hill, and then Gowanus and Wykoff in your district are currently the only four sites that are funded and will be planned.
So what's the total for?
Yeah. So for Gowanus Houses and Wykoff Gardens, the funding largely has come in through the Gowanus rezoning program.
That's right.
And so $212 million was allocated through that. And NICA has added a certain amount of federal funding to be able to optimize the scopes, working with stakeholders at those sites. And so...
And then what about for St. Nicholas and Todd Hill?
Yeah. For St. Nicholas and Todd Hill, the initial funding came from what's called the City Capital Action Plan, where the city allocated $2.2 billion to NICA as part of the HUD Agreement or pursuant to that agreement. Out of that, $678 million is allocated for St. Nicholas and Todd Hill. And then again, we've looked for other funding sources, federal funding sources, either our own HUD funding or grant funding to supplement that, to be able to do an integrated scope at both of those developments.
So is there an effort to expand the number of projects participating in Comp-mod?
So currently, we don't have a specific plan to expand in the sense of a funding source to do that at scale. These are large projects, as we've just discussed. Where we receive sufficient funding at a property to do something like an 80% or 90% renovation through capital funding, then we would put it into the same program in the sense of the type of project, the delivery of the project is very similar, and therefore we'd house it underneath our comprehensive modernization team.
Got it. So as of right now, and Chairs, I just have a few more questions, if you'd allow me. So as of right now, outside of the four, there is no plan, as of, let's say, today, for additional funding to Comp-mod or this extensive hefty renovation? Okay, moving on, there was a devastating fire at the Gowanus Houses in recent months, and I know fire safety, particularly across our aging public housing stock, is a critical issue. How much funding is NICA dedicating in the coming fiscal year to fire safety training across NICA campuses? And how is this distributed across the city and campuses?
Thank you so much for that question. We agree, fire safety is critically important. I don't have the specific budget numbers on that, on that program with us today, but we'll definitely follow up and get that back to you. I will say that NICA is investing in our fire safety program. We've hired a new fire safety director recently that's reconstituting the entire department and really refocusing our efforts. We are having a stronger relationship with FDNY. We have been doing training events and educational awareness events. We hosted the first-ever fire safety training event with all of our resident leaders just recently and...
As of this year?
Yes.
Everything you're describing is 2024?
Yeah, just within this...
But right now, you don't have any data on just the allocations that went towards...
I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't bring that specific number with us today, but we will definitely share it with you.
Okay, great. And then going into the sitting vacant apartments, as my colleagues lifted up, the council's budget response requested $45 million for the vacant unit readiness program. The executive plan does not include any of that funding. Could you just go into, again, why NICA is not planning to fund this program? And what is NICA's target for the target vacancy rate for the next two years?
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember, for that question. So we have $226 million for the vacant unit readiness program over five years, from fiscal year 2024 to 2028. In fiscal year 2024 alone, there's $73 million that we're working through spending down across capital and expense, and our target is 3,000 units.
Got it. And then what changes and procedures is NICA making to ensure that it can efficiently rehab apartments to lower the vacancy rate to its goal or lower?
Thank you, Councilmember. We've been working within operations to improve our productivity. As I mentioned, we've done 40% more move-ins this year than last. We're looking at just over 400 apartments a month that we're doing for turnovers. We've increased our efficiency...
And could you just describe what increasing efficiency means?
Sure, yes. So we've increased our ability to procure cabinets and access to materials to make that more readily accessible, as well as how we've planned it so that we know which vacancies we're working on and having the materials available.
And was that, was that like the brunt of the issue, being able to obtain?
No, we were working through a backlog as we waited for our environmental, you know, the state's back a little bit now, but we did change gears with the new city law for lead. So we had to scale up to be able to test and abate at the new lead .5 micrograms rule. And once we were doing that, we were also doing all asbestos testing and abatement. So we're very proud of the fact that all of our turnovers are lead-free and asbestos-safe for the next family. And then once we get through the environmental work, we have significant repairs that are needed in the apartment that require multiple trades. In some cases, we use vendors, and as we mentioned, that requires typically new cabinets, new fixtures, all new paintings, sometimes plastering. So we've worked to allocate all of our resources in order to improve that turnaround process.
Thank you. I know my colleagues would agree that we really need to be as efficient as possible to ensure that there is no vacancy. And thousands of New Yorkers still remain on the waitlist or unhoused, and we urge you to do even better. Thank you so much. Thanks, Chairs.
Okay. Now we have questions from Councilmember Lewis, followed by Abellus.
Thank you, Chairs, and good afternoon, good morning. Thank you for being here today. I have a few questions, capital projects, vacancies, and corruption. So the first one is in response to the preliminary budget. The council called for $5 million to support staffing. For issues with capital project completion, in the FY '25 executive budget, there was no additional funding allocated. One particularly egregious case of neglect on capital projects occurred at Glenwood Houses in my district, where the city council funded the reconstruction of the community center's restroom for improvements and to include ADA accessibility of $650,000 in 2022. Construction halted after multiple years of nothing happening, and NICA failed to provide recourse and information to my office and residents throughout the process. So you could imagine how minors, little boys and little girls, use the bathroom. Additionally, I have another project that was funded through participatory budgeting for an awning of $135,000, and we have been told that although the funding is there, NICA has no plans to actually complete the project and no timeframe was ever provided to us. So the question's on that. How does NICA plan to address the extreme delays and lack of prioritization of funded capital projects by the city for repairs? And how much of the $4.9 billion in operational revenue that you mentioned in your testimony is NICA advocating to address capital support staff? And is the administration prepared to address these issues with increased personnel? My next question is on vacancy. There are several operational issues affecting NICA buildings in my district and citywide. I've had numerous cases regarding the administration of Section 8 vouchers and move-ins that have been delayed to inspections. I had a case in my district where a domestic violence survivor was waiting for over a year to move into Glenwood Houses in my district due to lead inspection with no recourse or support from on-site management and customer contact support. How does NICA plan to address the inordinate delays that tenants face when moving into units with their vouchers with this current budgeted headcount at the agency? And is NICA aware of the dysfunction of the service due to long hours, long hold times to get support to get into their homes? The last one is on corruption. My last question is relating to staff rehabilitation of public housing stock. And with the outstanding and egregious case of corruption of housing maintenance and staff embezzling critical funds to be used for maintenance and repair work at numerous properties across the city, what is the impact of the loss of these funds for the maintenance budgeted for these buildings and which theft was taking place? And the last one is, is NICA working with the Attorney General or the federal government to get back the funding lost through theft? And how much funding is still outstanding from fraud from these buildings? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. So I'll start with the questions related to our capital projects work. I think you initially asked around staffing and staffing budgets. As a non-city agency, you know, we do not receive expense funding for our capital project staffing. But within our operating budget, a significant portion of that around personnel expenses does go to my area that manages our capital projects. And so we have, we're a large division, we're running a large number of projects. And as I mentioned earlier, any of the projects that were paused, including at Glenwood, we are developing a plan to restart them now so that we're able to move all of them forward expeditiously.
So are you saying Glenwood is on your list of the 650?
Yes. Glenwood is on the list. You mentioned two different projects.
There's one that's awning, another is the restrooms for my...
Yeah. So the restrooms is on the list of paused projects and something that we will plan that restart together with stakeholders. The awning, I'll follow up on because I'm not clear on that funding and that project, as you mentioned it today. I would mention, so in terms of your point around how do we communicate with residents and stakeholders, we do a quarterly in-person meeting with resident leaders at each site, including at Glenwood, where we go through the status of all projects, whether they are already active, whether they are on hold, whether they are planned for the future. We talk through those issues, any concerns the resident leadership has.
We currently have no superintendent, and if there is one, we're not aware of who that is.
So this is not the superintendent who has this meeting. This is folks from my team on the capital side.
Yeah, but they haven't met with us. I'm just letting you know, the last time we had a meeting was a couple of months ago.
Okay. I'll follow up on that. We also provide biannual letters to councilmembers' offices regarding all projects in their district, the status of those projects. And anytime, you know, unfortunately, last year, we had to formally pause those projects. We did one-off meetings with stakeholders, as well as provided formal letters to everyone around what was happening, why it was happening, and we're working to mitigate, you know, any adverse impact from that as we move forward.
Right. We received no letter in regards to a heating pipe that was supposed to be put in the original plans, and we learned later that that's what halted minors from getting access to a bathroom.
I'm happy to follow up on that. I'm not familiar with that specific issue, but if there's something there, you know, we'll look into that and see where the gap was.
And just know, the holdup holds up young people from being able to have access to a restroom during after-school programming and Saturday programming.
I understand. Thank you for raising that.
If you could, please discuss the vacancy issue that we mentioned.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to follow up separately with you to hear about these delays that you're referring to regarding placing voucher holders in apartments. I'm not familiar with this specific case, so I think it's best that you brief me on the situation so I can follow up with the staff involved.
And just know, there's multiple members here that have the same issues in their districts.
Yes, I'd like to hear more about that.
And are all of you allowed to have a conversation on corruption?
I'm sorry. We continue to work closely with the IG and the Southern District. We were just as disappointed and dismayed. There is no room for corruption at a NICA development, in NICA as an organization. And we are working, again, with the IG and the Southern District and to the extent... And we are working, again, with the IG and the Southern District, and to the extent that we can recoup any funds that were lost, you know, we'll work collaboratively with them to do that.
Thank you, thank you, chair.
Questions from council member Abellus, followed by Mealy.
Thank you, thank you, chairs, and good afternoon to the NITRA team. I was just thinking that we had a hearing just this past November on safety and security at the NITRA campuses, where we discussed pretty thoroughly the needs in senior buildings. So, you wouldn't be surprised to know how shocked I was, given the discussion there, that suddenly 6.8 million is where we're going to find savings. It kind of likened to how NITRA proposed finding savings with air conditioning. It just makes no sense to me. So, I'd like to understand the rationale besides all budget cuts are hard, of course they are, and they're particularly hard on our residents who have to live with this on a daily basis. What was the criteria that you used to make this decision? Specifically, can you tell me how many resident complaints you have heard for each of the developments that are impacted by now this sudden removal of safety and security? Can you talk to me about all the different criteria that went into making this decision? And, and not, not purely on a fiscal level, but what quality of life concerns did you take into account in making this decision?
Do you want to start? Sure. So, as mentioned, we have pretty significant needs at NITRA. Everyone is aware of those. At the same time, we have a pretty significant tenant arrears of $448 million. So, that's $448 million that we should have that we don't have. And over the last three years, we've really done the best that we could, using reserves and really trying to increase staffing at the properties and in other areas to be able to address the needs at the properties in terms of maintaining and operating aging buildings, and also meeting our HUD agreement requirements. But at some point, there just isn't enough money to go around. We do agree with you that it is a really difficult decision to make. It did not, we did not take that decision lightly. It weighs on us pretty heavily, the tough choices that we have to make. And I can tell you that we did that, you know, looking across holistically, no area was immune from budget cuts. My area got a budget cut, Lisa, it's, it's across the board.
So, could you provide? I, I, I really do feel badly about this, that the government has defunded NITRA systematically over a good number of years. And, you know, I'm a huge cheerleader of the importance of this public housing asset. As we know, 175,000 people are still waiting, despite all the challenges and the $80 billion capital needs, there's still hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers who need this housing. So, can you tell me, what, how many complaints did NITRA receive around safety issues for seniors over the last five years?
I'm sorry, council member, I don't have that data with us today, but we can certainly follow up with you separately regarding that.
Okay. And I'd like to know additionally, what other criteria you looked at. We talked about safety and security, and sorry, chair, I'll, I'll wrap up really quickly. We talked about layered access, we talked about broken locks and safety assessments that were wholly unfunded, that NITRA could, were doing safety assessments but could not, did not have the capital to actually implement anything. Were there any efficiencies to be found in some of these incredibly bloated contracts that have not been found to be very effective? Are we looking in those places for savings?
Yes, that's true. So, we have done a couple of things. First and foremost, we tried to prioritize maintenance and operating funding for the properties. That's our job as a landlord. We also rightsized the public housing headcount, as we discussed, so using attrition to overtime as developments move out through the PAC portfolio start to shrink because the revenues are not going to match as those developments no longer receive subsidy. We also reduced central office expenses and reallocated those fundings to core areas and pillar services. And we also put in place significant overtime control measures to really try to constrain our costs. Yet and still, with all of those things together, we could not balance the budget or even get close. And so, that's where we had to make those really difficult decisions. Other things that we did, for example, specifically speaking to contracts, we replaced third-party heating vendors with in-house staff to more efficiently manage our heating plants, and those items were previously managed by outside contractors. So, to your point, that is an area that we are hyper-focused on, and we've already started to see efficiencies as our in-house staff members can do more work in apartments that those vendors could not perform. So, we hear you, and that's an area that through our work here, and then also at the work and our DOI recommendations, is something that we're continuing to look at to get rid of fraud, waste, and abuse.
I appreciate that, and I, I trust that you, you're combing for every dollar. This is just not the place to cut. One life, one safety issue, 6.8 million, it's not worth it. So, I would urge you to really go back or have the administration, if this is what the administration wants to leave our seniors out, hang out to dry, then they're going to be accountable for the one injury, the one problem that we're going to have with our seniors. So, I just want to ask one last question. In terms of RadPAC, when, for something like Hope Gardens, who's a RadPAC site, I'm not understanding why NITRA is carrying still capital projects when that is a RadPAC site on the books. Shouldn't that be the developers' responsibility?
So, I think you're referring to the, the recovery money, the CDVG money, yes. So, that is a result of some extensive flooding that has occurred since Hurricane Ida, and there have been a number of floods since due to heavy rains. And it's a function of the sewer system in the area that can't handle the capacity. So, we applied for some funding to make the site more resilient, and we were awarded that money, and we're moving forward with those projects.
Of course, I'm in favor of anything that's going to support residents, but it sounds really interesting that we are now having sites that are in private management and should be incurring the costs to do any kind of renovation for these buildings, yet we are still, as a city, applying to subsidize private management to do the upgrades for the buildings that they need. So, I'm not sure where we're seeing savings if this continues to happen as well. We're subsidizing both private development and then unloading on private developers as well. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Thank you for the comment. Again, you know, this is an extreme situation. This is not something that we're doing in the regular course of business. It's due to the unique flooding characteristics of this neighborhood.
Thank you, chair.
I said, one follow-up on the vacant units. Could you tell us how many of the vacant units scheduled for renovations are set aside for residents that are in the units that are being converted?
So, none of the, none of the apartments that are available right now and part of our turnover pipeline are part, are necessarily part of the upcoming PAC conversions. When we, when we anticipate a conversion, we then, those apartments that come, that become vacant become what we, what we call temporarily off the rent roll, and we put them into that separate category in order to hold those vacancies for the PAC developer in order to facilitate in-place relocations during their construction process. So, we don't do those turnovers, so they're not part of our pipeline.
Got it, okay. Okay, we have questions now from Mealy, followed by Hudson. You're up.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm gonna say, sorry, but not sorry. You just said to us that you, out of your billion-dollar budget, you're saying that you couldn't find no other way to get 6.5 million dollars, but you want to balance the budget off the vulnerable population, our seniors. That's how you're going to balance this budget? That's what you, you just said, right? For the senior centers that will not have security guards?
So.
You said you tried to find them, find money, and it came down to taking security guards away from our seniors.
Thank you for that question, council member.
That's what you said, right?
Removing the security guards does not even get us to balance, so we are still short $35 million. And if there's an emergency, we could be short more than that before year-end.
But why would you choose to do that off our seniors? You could not find anything else you could find money for.
We have cut other areas as well.
So, you telling me, the real estate, you have, how much money did you make off the, you, you have some land at U-Gilroy Senior Center that you take in their backyard and you gave, you developing housing on there right now. How much did you make from that?
So, the projects, I think you're referring to Red Van Dyke.
Not Van Dyke, U-Gilroy Senior Center, Kingsborough.
So, the, those projects are 100% affordable projects, and so.
How much did you make from the land? That was a senior NITRA building, and now you, you.
Yes, so those are, those are 100% affordable.
Sold the property behind it, right?
Yeah, those are 100% affordable projects, and so.
You're not answering my question.
So, they require subsidy.
You're not answering my question, sir.
I'm getting there. So, they require some subsidy, which could be the form of land value. So, we don't actually make a lot of money off of those transactions.
So, you just gave away land?
No, we get about, I think for those, we can confirm the numbers, but it would be single million dollars.
I asked at the last hearing, chair, and please, financial department, last hearing, they said they gave away the land behind the senior center for housing, and you saying you have no money, and you're going to give away land, that you're going to make billions off our seniors with that new building? Because they are trying to get on housing connect to get in to the apartments right now. So, you telling me you just gave away property, and you're going to now take our security guards from our seniors to balance NITRA budget?
Well, again, we, we do get very small acquisition fees.
How much?
A couple of million dollars typically, and we can confirm.
How much? This is a financial hearing.
We can confirm, we can confirm the specific amounts for each of the projects.
CEO, how much did y'all make from that sale? That should be at this hearing right now.
We don't have that information, but we're happy to follow up with you.
And I know that property is going to be worth at least 60 million, and you're going to take our seniors now, security away from them. Could you tell me if the security guards were unionized?
Yes, they are part of 32BJ.
So, you getting rid of 32BJ, union jobs, who you going to replace them with?
They're not being replaced.
They're not being replaced at all, so you taking away good jobs now? And with the six senior, oh, you call them campuses now, with the six campuses that has no CCTV, what are you going to put in place to make sure our seniors are secure? Their safety?
So, just to clarify again, it's, it's buildings and not developments or campuses that we're talking about, so in total, it's 55 buildings in the, in the senior portfolio with guards right now, and six buildings that don't have cameras out of.
So, what you going to do about that?
As I've said, we are working with the NYPD to coordinate, you know, so that they are aware of this change. We have been working closely with them on additional programming, including walkthroughs with, with, in partnership with DHS. We are also doing our comprehensive development safety assessments to identify areas of risk, to come up with action plans for each site, you know, often that includes, you know, working on doors and intercoms and other safety measures.
So, you're going to give them new intercoms?
No, I'm not saying we're going to give them new intercoms, but we're.
You did say that.
We're evaluating all of the buildings, we look for risks, and, and.
So, if you see risks, what would you do?
We'd have to identify funding in the budget if needed to make any repairs.
You will find funding in the budget?
We would have to identify.
If you find out there's risk for our seniors that may get hurt, robbed, you're going to put fund, you'll find funding then?
No, we will identify the funding needed, but I can't guarantee we will fund those repairs.
Okay, and I gotta say, I guess I have to call the reporter, Ms. Morales, to get things done with my colleague, Salamanca. Last hearing we had, we talked about a tree at Park Rock that a blind, impaired senior was getting in a taxi, and it's a big tree stump there that's been there for almost two or three months. And before I left, left the last hearing, Fairfair, who took over the site, said that the stump was gone. I rode by there yesterday, the stump is still there. So, somewhere or another, y'all have to decide whether it's your property or is it DOT? Because when it's snow on the ground and ice, NITRA get out there and clean it. So, that's the same exact thing. If that tree fell over and it's still on NITRA property, y'all have to get that tree stump out the way. That's a safety hazard for the community, and it shouldn't be whether we plant ping-pong, no, it's yours, it's mine, it's yours. We need safety for our seniors, and that's one of the things that we have to decide. If I, and we have one more question, chairs. How many senior centers NITRA know that are closed?
We can get back to you with that number, I don't have it available right now, how many senior centers are currently closed?
Do you know Mount Arat is closed right now? That they didn't have, it was on the news, we were, we were on the news last night. We have Mount Arat right here today in the audience, you're supposed to go like this, to make sure that, this is a 300-unit NITRA building, where now seniors are not eating. Y'all, y'all aware of that? Because the last hearing, have you thought of anything in regards to that? Have you tried to do anything? We've been trying, and we getting nothing.
We have to work closely with our other city partners on all community centers, whether it's DYCD or the, or the Department for the Aging. And so, we work closely with them on, on providers and repairs that are needed, and some, I, I don't have the specifics on the closing, but we're happy to follow up with your office on that.
Can I have one, just one more? Is it true that by law, a tenant associations should have access to their facility, community room?
We, we can clarify.
At least the TA.
Clarify that. The, the community centers are supposed to be a resource for resident associations.
Shouldn't they have access?
They should have access in order to have, to be able to hold resident meetings and other events.
Exactly.
So, it's supposed to be a community resource, and we work closely with our resident associations and our community providers and, and our city agency partners, like I said, DYCD and Department for the Aging, to make those centers accessible to our resident associations.
Okay, so it is, you're in compliance if you letting them utilize the facility?
If you're aware of any situation where a resident association is not being allowed access, please let me know so we can help facilitate an agreement.
Mount Arat, 1630 St. Mark's.
Again, if the center is closed, that's a different situation.
But they still should have access to have meetings in order to make sure that they could get their center reopened.
But if, if the center is closed, then we cannot provide access to it. It's being closed down to, to probably uninhabitable conditions.
No, nothing. We just had a meeting there last night.
Okay, well then, I'm sorry.
Just last night.
I misunderstood the line of questioning.
New York 12.
So, we will follow up with you separately on the issue.
So, please, let's start talking about that. Thank you, chairs, for the laughter.
Chair Banks.
Thank you. Consistently, we've been hearing that NITRA has been doing everything to fine, well, prevent the cuts to the 6.7 million dollars that are being provided to protect our seniors. I want to know, the city foregoes about 105 million annually in payments to NITRA. I want to know why is it that you didn't reach out to the administration to get the $7 million to protect our seniors?
So, the, what actually happens is that the city allows. So the, what actually happens is that the city allows NYCHA not to pay a pilot, which is called a payment in lieu of taxes, as well as payments to the NYPD. This was done in the de Blasio administration, and thankfully, has been continued by Mayor Adams and his team. So we're really grateful, because that would be another 108 million dollars that we would have to find to pay the city.
Does that save, the savings, does it produce revenue?
We've had that.
That can then be allocated?
So, quite frankly, if we have a $35 million budget, and the city comes to me tomorrow and says, I have to pay them 108 million, now we have 108 million plus 35 million, because we do not have that funding to pay.
Well, once again, it just goes back to the underlying theme today that the budget shouldn't be balanced, or NYCHA's deficit shouldn't be balanced on the back of our seniors, and you should have found other means to secure our seniors and, and protecting our seniors with that as 6.8 million. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Questions from Councilmember Botcher, followed by Brewer.
Good afternoon. You've got tough jobs. I, I do feel for you sometimes with respect to the issues you've inherited, but I've always been shocked that on NYCHA campuses, there's no staff and security present overnight. The idea that you could have these massive campuses with thousands of people living there with no overnight security or staff presence of any kind, I've just found that to be shocking. Is NYCHA compliant with the New York City Housing Maintenance Code with respect to superintendent coverage?
We have supers in every building, every development. I have to get back to you regarding the, the actual code language and our compliance.
It says that any building with more than nine units must have a super who lives in the building within or within 200 feet of the building, or within one block of the building, whichever is greater, provide janitorial services on a 24-hour basis.
Yeah, so I, I want to get back to you with a definite answer on compliance with that code, however, NYCHA is staffed 24/7. During the day, we have our onsite staff supporting the, the residents and the, and the maintenance needs. Overnight, we have coverage through our Emergency Services Department, and so we will follow up with a more comprehensive answer for you, specific to the Housing Maintenance Code. There is a possibility that we have an exemption to that, and I would just want to be sure before I give a final answer.
NYCHA has a lot of exemptions. If, if you were a private landowner, and I don't mean this personally, but if NYCHA was a private landowner, landowner, people would be jailed for the conditions that the tenants are living under. That's just fact, because we have landlords who've gone to jail for, quite frankly, better conditions than what NYCHA tenants are living under as a whole. As a policy matter, it seems to me that a priority should be to provide onsite staff presence overnight, and that's something that, given the budget that you're describing and that we've been dealing with for years, it's clearly something that's probably not on the table right now, but that is something that should have been on the table a long time ago, and should be a goal of NYCHA to provide staff presence onsite. What time does the staff leave physically in the afternoon?
The shift ends at 4:30 PM.
So all the, all the onsite staff leaves at 4:30 in the afternoon?
That's correct, and then after 4:30, it's Emergency Management Services that deploy roving teams to respond to critical repairs and safety issues after night, after hours.
Thank you.
We have Councilmember Brewer, followed by Ferras.
Thank you. I think the, I guess the two big questions are the senior buildings support and then the vacant, so I'm not gonna ask about them, except on the vacancies, since we're all interested, I've asked about it in the past. Is there a real-time data set that tells us what's been completed and what's in process at NYCHA?
Yes, we have multiple dashboards that we use to manage our vacant, our vacancy production, we're able to look at a development level.
Is that public?
Vacancies. It's not public, it's a tool we use internally to manage performance, however, as I mentioned, we're doing over 400 apartments a month now.
And I heard, I took my notes, but I still think it would be great to have it public, just because that's something that could be considered. It's a database, it's, I mean, open data platform, it would be something that I think would help you, because otherwise, people don't know that you're doing it. So I would really suggest that you try to make that public in whatever way that's possible.
We can, we can certainly discuss internally, we do have a metrics page right now on our website that does note the total number of vacant units.
No, but it doesn't give you this breakdown, I've seen it. All right, so I'd really like to suggest that, otherwise we'll make a law that says you have to do it, so I would suggest that you do it. On the seniors, so how are they gonna get in? I mean, I'm hoping this doesn't happen, we're very upset about it, but I know these key fabs from other situations don't always work. How will they get into their building with no security?
Again, the security was just a, a single eight-hour shift, so it was not around-the-clock security, so if there are door issues or issues with key fabs that you're aware of, please let me know so that we can have our teams follow up. We have been taking special note and canvassing our, our senior buildings to ensure the doors are working, if there are fabs that need to be replaced or reassigned, we can work through our office.
I think the issue is, and you know this better than I do, it's hard to get somebody, particularly at night, sometimes I want, don't be, I'd love to know what is the listing of problems that you have through the CCC, whatever it is. They complain, and I've said this before, that sometimes at night, there's nobody to call, even though there is somebody to call, I understand that, but it's not like there's a doorman downstairs or a doormen downstairs to come upstairs. So that is a huge consideration, they're afraid to go out at night because they can't get back in. So I think that's another reason to keep the security, even though it's not all the time. Now, I've got four questions. Commercial units generally around the city, what's the status? How many are vacant? And, you know, you always say, you know, we're working on it, but it does bring in some income, commercial. Parking, I want to understand what the contracts are, we don't like LAZ, whoever the hell they are, I don't know this company, but they are horrible. So I want to know, what's the park, because you've got public parking to make money, and then the resident parking, so how much income is coming in from the parking contracts? And then I also want to understand the whole issue of Harborview is, you're gonna say it's NYCHA's problem, it's not my problem, but I was told 124 units under Hudson Yards, I don't know how many years ago, and what happened to my 124 affordable units? HPD keeps saying, Gil, we have to give some money to NYCHA. No, I want 124 units of affordable housing, no money to NYCHA. Those are my questions, parking, vacancy, and Harborview. And thank you for all the work you did on lead abatement, that, I think your previous monitor takes full credit, but I think you deserve some also.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, for all those questions. I'll start with the, with commercial units and commercial spaces. I apologize, we don't have that data with us today, but we will certainly follow up with you on the number of commercial spaces in our portfolio, and how many are vacant.
And what are you doing about to make them occupied? Wouldn't that be a suggestion?
Absolutely, absolutely. For parking, well.
Thank you for the question regarding parking. We do have different rates for parking, so we have resident rates, non-resident rates, and then within our resident rates, we also have discounts for persons with disabilities, handicap placards and the like. On parking, we only earn five to seven million dollars a year, and that goes directly back into the budget for the specific development. So as a HUD rule, that parking lot is considered program income of that development, and so that dollar that's earned, how much ever of that five to seven million, has to go back to that development to support their operations.
Okay, and if there are problems with the carrier, so to speak, or the vendor, does that have any weight with anything? And also, if it goes back into the development, again, is that something that we can see where the actual dollars go in that development? Is that a dashboard that we can see?
So.
Is it internal, or is it public?
So we are required by HUD to produce income and expense statements for every property. I will say that half of our properties run in the red, so they are in deficit, but there are lines for items like parking, washing machine fees, and the like in every development budget, so that does exist, and our property managers have access to, you know, that report, and they can see that.
Okay.
It's something that we will be training them on, we're rolling out a training this year.
Okay, why did this wonderful man show up?
And then in terms of, you know, any issues with the vendor, you know, please make sure that our intergovernmental team is aware.
We call him 24/7, vacation included.
Yes, and we're happy to.
And he responds, to his credit.
Thank you, Brian.
No, thank you, and thank you, Councilmember. And Harborview, I think we're well past time to sit down once again to talk about, you know, the agreement that was put in place part of the Hudson Yards.
By Gil Brewer.
And Jonathan Convaya and I will follow up with your office, and we will sit down to talk about that project and getting it back on.
All right, thank you very much.
We have Councilmember Ferras.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I just have a couple of questions around some of the discussion that happened earlier with the halting of capital projects. I specifically have two projects that I'd like to talk about. I know you mentioned there were 35 projects that were moving forward, but we're not specific of the sites, so I just wanted to know, one, if you have those sites available to you today, and, two, if Monroe Houses Community Center is on that list of sites that will be restarting their capital process for the renovation of the center?
Thank you, Councilmember Ferras. So I do have the list of sites in the projects that were paused last year, and that we are working on a restart plan. Monroe Community Center is not one of those, in the sense of Monroe Community Center's funding was defunded as part of this budget process earlier this year.
And so with the allocations that we saw within OMB, the money that came down from the state in terms of capital projects for NYCHA, how are you guys, or you folks, looking at restarting some of those projects? And specifically, my interest is with Monroe.
So for Monroe and a small number of projects that were defunded out of the budgeting process earlier this year, we put those kind of indefinitely on pause until some sort of funding solution can be found to restore the project.
And so the money that we got is not a solution?
The money, are you referencing the state funding that was provided to NYCHA?
The state funding, and within the budget that we saw with OMB, that capital projects can be reinstated?
So the state funding, as we discussed a bit earlier in the hearing, that we, was appropriated two weeks ago to us, we're now engaging with the state legislature and stakeholders to understand how we can best utilize that funding. That goes through a process of discussing specific types of investments and scopes of work and different sites to understand what that money can be allocated for. So we're not at the stage to yet, you know, have a clear view about where we can finance. Traditionally, the state has financed areas related to our HUD pillars, so heating, elevators, facade work, mainly in the last few years with all the funding that's come in, rather than community centers and projects like that. The, on the city side, you mentioned the OMB allocations, I mean, the funding that we have in our budget is allocated to specific projects, it's not available for reallocating to some of these defunded projects, however, you know, we're actively happy to work with stakeholders to see if there's other ways to solve these funding impacts that came out of the budget process.
Yeah, I mean, you folks have actively defunded a community center that not only is critical to the seniors in this community, but also to the youth that's within my community. I think we all have a vested interest in ensuring that young people are having after-school activities, having weekend activities, and you folks are very aware, we were a couple months ago picking out the tiles for this center with folks in the community, and you have now defunded this capital project that they have been waiting on for close to a decade. I fully expect to keep the conversations going to ensure that the money gets reinstated and this project gets funded again, because it is necessary for my community. Additionally, with a capital project, if I may, Chair, got additional time? Thank you. I have a project that has been from two predecessors ago, Councilmember, former Councilmember Annabelle Palma allocated capital for Bronxdale Nursery in my district, and you folks have not been able to find any qualified bidders, and it was allocated in 2017. How are you folks working on ensuring that these projects don't get left behind, and we find qualified bidders and move the capital process along?
Sure, so any, any projects that have funding that's before 2020, 2019, we have a very heavy focus on. Often, those projects have some earlier funding, and then some funding that came in later because they were underfunded, or we allocated federal funding to kind of close the gap, and we are very focused on that portfolio the last two years, in particular discretionary allocations that happened in the past. And a large portion of those projects have now finished construction or are moving towards that. In specific instances, as you mentioned, if we have a procurement and we have a failed bid process, there can be a number of different causes of that. That could be because bids are coming in very high, it could be because we're not able to attract vendors for a certain type of work at a certain site. So I'm not, I don't have the specifics about why the bid failed in that case right in front of me in that project, but I'm happy to follow up with you after the hearing, both around why that happened and what we're trying to do to move the project forward effectively.
Great, I'd love to have a follow-up meeting on both of these topics so we can discuss, and since you are saying you're coming to me with a meeting, I won't be filling out a form, so please let me know, have your teams reach out to my staff so we can pick some dates and times. Thank you, Chair, for the additional time.
Chair Banks.
Thank you. Just clarification on the, the hours of security coverage for the developments, for the senior developments. Just want to find out, and I guess you can correct me if these numbers are wrong, one development, which is Cardigy-Woodsen, has 24-hour security, round-the-clock?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Six, eight developments have 16 hours of security service around, for 16 hours? Sorry, seven, seven developments have security coverage for 16 hours?
Yes, seven.
And 40, the other 46 just have eight-hour shifts?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, just want a clarification on that, thank you.
I have a question from Councilmember Hanks, who had to leave with regards to some of the developments in her district. While West Brighton and Toad Hill houses are slated for renovations through RAD PAC, Stapleton houses have experienced recurrent utility failures, including gas and multiple electric outages leading to unsafe conditions. Can you tell us if the Stapleton houses are being considered for any renovations, and if not, can you provide detailed plans of what NYCHA is doing to shore up on some of these concerns at Stapleton houses?
Right now, we do not have a comprehensive modernization plan for Stapleton houses. We're happy to talk with the resident association there if there's interest in, in one of our current pipelines, such as PAC or the Preservation Trust. We have been working closely with the resident leader in regards to the current electrical issues that the development has been facing. Our work is ongoing to replace the cables and, and permanently restore power. The development has been running on generators, and we're working hard to get that, that work completed.
Do you have a timeline for the completion of the West Brighton and Toad Hill houses project?
I can speak to West Brighton. We expect to complete that conversion by the end of June, it's gonna happen in the, the remainder of the city fiscal year, and then from that point, it should take about two to three years to complete the renovations.
For West Brighton, right?
That's West Brighton, correct.
And Toad Hill?
Yeah, for the Toad Hill, which is a comprehensive modernization capital project, as we discussed earlier, it's, it's quite a large budget and integrated scope across the property. We've recently executed the contract with the design-build entity a couple months earlier than planned. We're hoping to see physical work start in 2025, and that'll extend for two to three years. We're currently, you know, working with the design builder to, you know, work through the design over the next few months, but then to have a clear construction schedule that would lay out those timelines.
Okay, and but for West Brighton, you said by end of, what happens at the end of June?
That's when the conversion will actually happen, so we will transfer management responsibility to the PAC partner, and they will commence the comprehensive rehabilitation. the comprehensive rehabilitation.
Got it, got it, got it, okay. Okay, any of my colleagues have any other questions? Chair Banks? Okay, thank you all, appreciate your partnership and look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you all very much. We'll take a 10, 15-minute break, and then we're going to hear from the public. Can everybody settle down and find a seat? We're getting ready to continue. Everybody settle down and find a seat. We are getting ready to continue. Okay, welcome back. Where is it? Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, now going to open the hearing for public testimony, and I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public should remain silent, save for obviously those who are testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Furthermore, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the official record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, and you're here today and you haven't done so already, you must fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. Once you're recognized, you'll have two minutes to speak on today's budget hearing. You got to stay on topic for NICA FY '25. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony that you wish to submit for the official record, please provide us a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. And in addition, if you want to submit testimony and you don't have it prepared today, you've got 72 hours to include it into the official record, and you can email that to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Obviously, that's for anybody that's watching on Zoom at home. Audio and vinyro recordings will not be accepted, only written testimony. I'm now going to call the first panel. Please pardon if I say your name wrong or I can't read your handwriting. Gwen McGowan, Gwen McGowan, French. Vera Faturova. Terry Campuzano. Martin N. Scarcy, or, I'm sorry, Metin Scarcy. Carmen Feliciano. And Lawrence Somerville. And Christie Ortiz. So Gwen McGowan, French. Vera Faturova. Terry Campuzano. Metin Sarcie. Carmen Feliciano. Lawrence Somerville. And Christie Ortiz. Okay, you want to start from the left? Just say your name, and then you can begin. Just make sure your mic is on.
I'm Gwen McGowan, French.
Good afternoon, Gwen.
Thank you, Council Chairman, Councilors.
You may begin.
I'm so glad to be here today. I'm so glad to be here today. I've listened to the proceedings and about the budget, and I've made some notes about it. But it's very strange that you're going to balance the budget by discarding the seniors. I'm from the Woodson Houses. That's St. Powell Street. And I'm talking in behalf of the... My billing is 365, 367, but I'll speak for all the Woodson Houses at this time. The seniors are the pillows of an organization. And from the seniors, we come to the top where you have these offices now. You've got to remember, the seniors are there, and you've got to be taken care of. I listen to the police. I wonder if the police will come there every day and stand up inside the place and guard the place for the seniors. The seniors, the security is very much needed because the guards that we have there, they know the persons that live within that location. They are doing a wonderful job. And some of the doors don't close, so they will be there when... Who coming in, they will go back and close it. And they can stand up for the seniors. Seniors are... Some can walk like me, but some cannot. And I think that it is a very sad moment to take away the guards because when you're out... Right now, I'm talking, my pressure went up just hearing what is going on today. I'm 75 years old. And the thing is, is that it leaves me just fear for the other seniors. Because if there's no guard, people passing on the street can look in, there's no guard, well, we can go in. We can go in because if right now, there's no killing in that building. But as soon as you take the guards away, surely there will be. Do you want to get rid of the seniors? This way? Police is not there all the time. The guards are there. And if the guards are there to protect the seniors, and the seniors need help. And I think that is all I can say at this moment because police can just patrol among the areas. And by the time you just called for a police, the person already dead. The building before had five persons that was killed in that building. We don't need it anymore for the seniors. And I think it's time that it remain on the budget where the seniors are concerned in this New York City.
Thank you, Gwen. We agree. Remind us again, where do you live?
I live at 365, 367 Powell.
And how long have you lived there?
I'm there five years.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Go ahead. Make sure your mic is on. Just hit the button on the... There you go. Just say your name before you begin.
I'm Vera Faturova. I live in Starred City in Housing 77 Vandalia Avenue. I have a very fresh example about need security in housing. A few days ago, I was returning from Manhattan near the 10:00, 10:00 PM o'clock. And when I opened my door, okay, with me, went and ran to two very large, very big men, maybe in marijuana and cannabis, maybe. I was very afraid. I go to the elevator and all the way to the seventh floor. I'm very, very afraid. But it was well that time. But I'm sure that very, very needed in similar houses, the security.
And you would have felt much safer if you had the security guards there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Terry Campusano, the TA President of Melter Tower, where a senior building in the Lower East Side, East Village. Our building is in a peculiar situation. It's across from Katz Deli. We're surrounded by bars and everything. And we have school kids that run into the building in the daytimes. We have drugs behind the building and inside the building. We have cameras all around the building, but nobody's monitoring them at all. And I've asked James Secreto from Security for a few years ago... Now, this email is from 2022. And I had... I was talking to them about the security problem then. And I had asked them, could they please patch our cameras into the NYPD? And all I get is pushback from security, from NICA, saying that it's too much money and that it's a difficult job for them to do. So it's... So now, I was asking Carolina Rivera... No, I had called NICA Security because it's been an ongoing thing, and it's getting worse. You know, people that... We have no working intercom in the building. This is a 20-story senior building. So I was... NICA told me to call Carolina Rivera's office because they had no money. So I called Carolina Rivera's office, and my friend Brenda Lee Santiago from First Houses, we had put on our own projects. I had put in our intercom. So I find out just recently that NICA turned down our project, even though it was city council money. From what I was told is that it was turned down because NICA had had its quota of security-related issues. This is not only a security-related issue because it is a security-related issue because you could point people to the intercom and say, you can't come in here. So what's happening now is the kids and the drug people are coming in. They follow our tenants in the building. So there was something else that I... Was... What else was I... Remember I was telling you something? It was about, anyway, it's about the drugs and the problems within the building and NICA being able to keep up with our buildings at all. We, like I said...
Remind me the name of which development you're president of?
Melter.
Okay.
Melter Tower, where a senior residence in the East Village.
And, okay, and then, so you're on the list to have these security guards removed, and you also currently don't have an intercom system?
Right, our intercom system is out.
How long have you been without an intercom system?
For a few years.
Few years.
Right, and they want us to... They want all the tenants to like, oh, you have to call the call center. But the call center, we have a large Asian population. We have Russians, we have Polish. It's very difficult to communicate with the people. At my last TA meeting, we were at... We asked the people, how many people are having intercom troubles? Everybody raised their hand. So there's... I've been talking about this for a while, and we just can't get it done. Carolina was going to pay for it. The council was going to pay for it, and they turned us down.
Okay, I'll give you my business card before you leave, and I'll follow up with Councilwoman Rivera as well, and we'll figure this out.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Banks.
I want to find out, how many buildings? Is it one building? Is it a singular?
Melter, where a one single... Where a 20-story single building, surrounded by bars in the Lower East Side, graffiti artists. So far, they haven't touched the outside of the building like they did First Houses, but they're starting to get into our hallways and tagging our hallways. And the tenants are afraid to go inside the building because of constant, you know, with the kids in there. So at night, before our security comes in, our security comes in at 9:00, and they're there till 5:00. So when there's nobody there, and the sun is going down, and there's people that they don't know in the building, they are afraid to go inside. So with the security, talk about throw grandma over the hill, and that's what's happening now. I was the first one to hear about this.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Terry. We'll follow up with you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Hello? Thank you, Chair Banks. Thank you, Chair Brennan. My name is Mateen Sarsi, and I'm a public housing specialist with over a decade in public service and political engagement. I specifically specialize in NICA policy, community relations, and program implementation. The testimony before you is not representative of the New York City Housing Authority, where I am presently employed, and all opinions shared are based on my service to NICA residents. I'm here today for NICA community centers and the inadequate funding to support New Yorkers in this executive budget. New Yorkers depend on NICA centers to vote, receive health care, improve career opportunities, or even access to direct services. However, over 70% of NICA centers do not have lease agreements. City contracted organizations are led to believe that with no rental fees, they will be able to provide more funding to provide these services. However, the proposed budget this year disinvests in our youth by cutting over $10 million in DYCD programming, affecting over 100 NICA facilities. In addition, the current budget of $2.3 million is inadequate to cover necessary repairs and maintenance at over 450 locations. That's about $5,000 per center, leading to disruption in services and rising capital needs, which has been discussed today. To address this, I am actually recommending the funding of staff to support city contracted organizations in facility oversight, specifically to foster public nonprofit partnerships that may bring additional funding opportunities and decrease the need for city subsidy. We already know that NICA cannot move forward with certain capital, and it seems to be that the centers are at the heart of that. And so I do believe a private, a public nonprofit option is the solution. I think that's a much better investment than the proposed $16 million decrease in capital repair staff despite numerous facility violations jeopardizing city contracted services and city partners' operating budgets. Because at the end of the day, if there isn't enough money to do repairs, a lot of the times, the CBOs themselves are performing those same repairs despite the cost savings that they were perceived to believe. Thank you for having me, and happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
So my name is Kristi Ortiz. I'm the Director of the Preserving Affordable Housing Program at Brooklyn Legal Services Corporation A, or Brooklyn A. So we serve NICA tenants, but we could serve far more NICA tenants if the anti-harassment protect tenant protection program was expanded. It appears that the scope of work for the AHTP program in fiscal year '25 would not fund affirmative legal cases for public housing tenants. Right now, we can only commence actions against NICA for individual or group cases if there is a referral from the Family Justice Center, the Office of Civil Justice, or HRA directly, or DHS. This means public housing residents typically cannot make use of the valuable legal resources AHTP provides. NICA is a housing system that has estimated $78 billion of repair needs, meaning countless residents are living in inadequate, unsafe, or illegal conditions. And then expanding the scope of AHTP would give us a necessary tool to deliver justice for public housing residents. We actually, under the permission that we were granted last year or the year before, were able to get abatements for 67 tenants who were out of gas for about a year and a half. And so the first portion of the tenants got about 25% for about a year of rent, and then the other had 22% for about six months. And so actions like that and an expansion of the program would allow us to be able to ensure that repairs are done and done adequately. So Brooklyn A has submitted applications for renewed funding in fiscal year 2025 for its preserving affordable housing program, which provides legal representation, legal education, and advocacy strategies to preserve and protect affordable housing. We prevent evictions, combat tenant harassment and discrimination, and help tenant associations marshal the power of strength and numbers to protect the rights to safe and sanitary housing. Last fiscal year, our PAH program helps more than 3,300 individuals to maintain housing stability and supported, just two more minutes, supported 54 tenant associations to fight for habitable living conditions and combat harassment. This year, we're applying for $550,000 in funding under the Legal Services for Low-Income New Yorkers, LSLYNY, and Legal Services for Working Poor, as well as other initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Lawrence Somerville. I live in a senior building, 1634 St. Marks Avenue. We have a community center, of which I am a part, and I'm also on the board. I teach dance professionally, and I try to keep the seniors moving and being active. And since COVID came along, it has closed down. Our center has been defunded. And I'm here to find out when are they going to open our center? Because they talked about making it a community, a commercial entity. And that will cover my apartment because I live in 3R. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to the speaker, to Councilmember Committee Chris Bank, to our council member Darlene Millie, and the rest of the council here. My name is Essie Duggan, and I've been working with seniors for, I guess, over 30 years. And at the time when Mount Iraq Senior Center closed, it was during the pandemic, and it has not been open yet. And due to the fact that it has not been open, it has brought about a much isolation. Many, many members resident has died because total isolation. They didn't have no one to talk to. They didn't have a center to come down to, to eat, to fellowship, to play games, to take exercise. So all of that was cut out of their life. So many of them didn't really have too much to look forward to because either they was distant from family member. And some of them, the only family that they knew was there at the center, where they can come down daily, whether it was for lunch, breakfast, or bingo, whatever, that they know that they had some form of companionship, being able to talk to someone. So I am here as joining in with those that came from Mount Iraq as an advocate with our council member that this center must be open. It's been closed since 2020. And she has been trying to work to get it reopened, but the senior cannot continue in isolation when it was a very vibrant center. And then, the other thing that this claimed that they don't have money for this center, I don't see how they can fund other center that has less attendance on a daily basis than Mount Iraq used to have from 40 sometime to 50 people or more on special holidays. It has been up as high as 150 people, birthdays and things of that nature. But I am saying, we need this to step in to help to fund this center where it can operate properly along with our council member in seeking our funding so that our senior can have full service in this center. The other reason, nine, our seniors, the tenant association, and it was said earlier, is locked out of their center. How can tenants be locked out of their own center where they are renter and they cannot come in their center from 9:00 to 5:00 without getting permission of, okay? And it... And that doesn't take place unless they say it's a meeting. So that is not right. The tenant association should be able to come into their room in the center to meet where they can plan and negotiate, not just have to do it on the phone, not in person. So that is another thing that need to be corrected. The other thing in this center, which is major, that need to be corrected, and that has been going on, I would say, many, many years, a leak from the ceiling. going on, I would say, many, many years, a leak from the ceiling, coming, coming down from the ceiling, not necessarily from anybody apartment, and that is a problem because senior may slip and fall if they walk in there in this water and all of the hall, the hallway. The other serious problem is there's a sewage problem. There's a certain time within the center, there is a sewage smell, and housing claim there's not too much that they can do about it. They may do something temporarily that the smell kind of solid down, but still smell it, and then after, after a month or so, there's rise back up. So these are some serious problem, and they are health problem too. So, okay, thank you. So I just want to say, please, stay on NYCHA, get with Distra, and make sure there's money coming to the center. Thank you.
Ms. Dugan, always a pleasure to have you in the House. Just want to find out, do you agree that there's also a need to make sure that the Mount Arid has a security guard or that there's security?
Oh, yes, definitely. Oh, yes, definitely.
Just want to make sure you're on the record with that, too.
Yes, because they have been having incident, not senior coming into the building, but, you know, other coming into the building. And thank you so much, Councilmember Bank mentioned that. One other thing I had written down, hopefully is in the plan, to build senior housing for grandmother that has to raise their children, so they don't have to bring them into the ordinary senior housing. So that is a desperate need because you find so many grandmother seniors has to raise their grandchildren on. And so they need a senior housing, not just regular puppet housing, but senior housing to raise their children, grandchildren.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for taking the time. You want to say one last thing? Go ahead.
Yes. I, I used to be on tenant patrol in my building from eight to twelve P.M. And when we were told to call for assistance, we were told to call Public Service, which is on Sutter Avenue off of Alabama. That's exactly about ten miles away from us. Number one, they don't answer the phone, and when they do, by the time they get to us, whoever the perpetrator is, is gone. And we can't leave our posts to run after them, and they have been, you know, terrorizing the tenants.
Thank you. That's why we need the security guards. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to call our next panel. Diane Johnson, Axza Torres, Zulay Velasquez, Joel Kupperman, Albert Negron, and Renee Keith. So Renee Keith, Albert Negron, Joel Kupperman, Zulay Velasquez, Axza Torres, Diane Johnson, if you're here. You can begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Axza Torres, and I'm going to start with my titles. First, I'm a resident in public housing. I am the President of Alfred E. Smith Houses, but I am also the Manhattan South Decop Chair. And so today, I am definitely as the chair because I have several of my resident association, and one of the seniors already spoke from my district. It is uncongenible, it is incredible to me that NYCHA is cutting the security for seniors. And not only that, but they're asking them to do Resident Watch. And be very clear, I support Resident Watch. In my development, we have revised it at this point, right? We've gone from two buildings to now we have like ten buildings that have Resident Watch of people younger than me. I am seventy-one, even though I think I'm seventeen at times, and I try very hard. But I have a responsibility as a chairperson. You know, one of, one of my chairs, one of my members on my Decop Board texted me and said to me, if they weren't so top-heavy, having so many people with so many titles of VP, they could find the money. Somebody has to find the money for these seniors to have security. I can't conceive, right? The reason I now live in NYCHA is when my parents got to be elderly, I moved in with them to take care of them, and I have no regrets, right? But not everybody has a daughter to do that or have children to do that. I have three other siblings, they supported me, but I was the one that was available to be able to move in with them. How do you allow seniors to be this vulnerable? And I'm really perturbed about the fact that one of my developments, NYCHA turned back the money, saying, we're not doing this, when the money was given to them. So the question is, where are you looking for money? And I have, you know, I always believe in solutions. So we get in a lot of programs on the TV, and I know the city gets money from the filming industry for using our developments. Why can't you, why can't that money be allocated to our seniors? And we're not even talking about, like, I could spend six million dollars in an hour. Somebody, like, give me a break. Why can we not find the money for these vulnerable seniors? And yes, I'm a senior too, but I'm just saying, in these buildings, like Mentor, you have to pass through there at night, right? It's right on Houston. Not only, not only is the tourism, but the trafficking that goes in front of that building is incredible, and across the board uptown. So these senior buildings are in areas where it's highly populated, and, and they're vulnerable, and some of them. And in my district, I have a building that most are Asian-American, they don't even speak English, forget about that they're going to call nine-one-one, right? And get the services that they need. And I'm not complaining about the PSA. I am just saying that we, there has to be a better solution to this because one of the other, we've been trying to get a hold of the chancellor to sit down and meet with us because one of the other problems we're having is senior students hanging out in our developments because they think it's public housing and they can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Just make sure your mic is on.
Good afternoon. I'm glad we're here. I just, a point of information, is anyone from NYCHA remaining in the room?
Think so.
Well, maybe put that on the record that I have.
This, public is the most important part of any hearing.
Okay. I'm Joel Kupperman. I am the Executive Director and Environmental Justice Lawyer at Environmental Justice Initiative. I'm counsel to Smith Houses, representing people at Reese, and represented many other NYCHA residents, including residents to preserve public housing. Today is World Asthma Day, and I think it's important to point that out, that it's, the health threat that's going on at NYCHA housing is for unfettered construction that the city is not really doing anything about, especially NYCHA is not doing anything about, all right? Reese's come up, we submitted an article in today's paper, there's another person with high, high arsenic in their blood. What we heard today, NYCHA said, I'm not a doctor, then they should bring in a doctor. There's the City Health Department, the State Health Department, all these other departments. We have a problem there. But what's bad about Reese and all this testimony is it's the soil. The soil at Reese is un, has been covered, uncovered in eight-foot piles in front of people's windows. Kids are playing in that soil, they're walking through that soil, and they have very high levels of arsenic. So for no one to even bring that up from NYCHA is more than disturbing, it's disingenuous. That soil should be covered up. Besides arsenic, there's high levels of lead in that soil. So we have federal monitor, there's a new federal monitor out there, but we have to look back of why there's a court case. One was over lead exposure that led, kids are being exposed to lead from the soil that's that's coming in, it's not being covered. The other part is the arsenic is, is being hit. NYCHA is also spending a lot of money on contractors and construction managers that are not doing their jobs. At Smith, we caught monitors that were monitoring in the air around the corner from where the, where the work was going on. They were cutting into the concrete, the concrete was going into a window where two residents had asthma. We brought this up to STV, the construction manager, they said nothing, they didn't penalize, they paid the twenty-eight million dollars on that contract. What did NYCHA do with STV? Now they're their main advisor, telling all the, the other construction people what's good and not good, all right? There's a bad problem here that the good contractors are trying to do work and they're not, all right? And let me just, it's really important to point out that it's also the S V O Cs, all those chemicals are there, they don't want to know. The construction, as we, there's, there's ten more places that are there because of the storm. The storms upset that water, the water's carrying those S V O Cs, the construction is going underneath the buildings, and those vapors are going up into the buildings. It's called vapor intrusion. The state and the feds are willing to come in, NYCHA does not want to see them, all right? So we have ongoing, people are getting hit from below, they're also getting hit, we talked about roofs before, the roofs, when the water leaks, it's not just the water that's affecting them, it's going through asbestos, it's going through bird detriment, detritus or whatever, that causes cholera and other, other diseases. They don't want to test, all right? And there is also plenty, further unfettered construction is beginning to really kill the trees. At Baruch, we lost hundreds of trees, at Smith, we lost a lot of trees. The contracts state they have to do tree construction to protect the trees, they're not doing it. So the city is telling us we have a million tree program, there's a net loss of trees at NYCHA. The federal government has millions of dollars available for tree planting, NYCHA has not asked for that money. So all of this land that's there, the work is actually letting the soil go out that should be covered up with fabric that doesn't cost that much money, and we're paying higher ups, and NYCHA is not, the Capitol Division should be totally looked at, and also, I just, give me one more minute, because I've been here a long time, I've worked in this for three, four years, it's going back. Part of the problem is the staff workers are being affected, not just staff, not just the construction workers. We've heard over and over again that we've heard about sewage. Sewage is not a light issue. I was the lawyer that sued the U.S. on behalf of the, the people in Haiti, that the sewage of thirteen soldiers went into the water, and there was eighteen thousand cholera deaths. So we have a problem of the water being not analyzed and not even being cleaned up in, in people's houses.
Thank you. All right? Thank you. We have, we have a lot more to get to. Thank you very much.
But there's plenty of federal help and state help that NYCHA is not asking for.
Appreciate it.
And the contract should not be paid until the work is, is done the right way.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Zulay Velasquez. I live in Jacob Rees. That's why I wanted Joel to speak first. Outside of like what they need to do to remedy the land that's been documented by Con Edison and in their reports since I can look back twenty-twenty, they haven't remedied the site, but in addition to that, they've been approached to do so, and they're not doing it. As a result, yes, people are dying, people are getting sick, you know? There's one resident that has over forty people on a list. Just yes, just a week ago, someone actually died, and, you know, we're encouraging the family to do an autopsy. So I, I think in addition to what Joel was saying, I think because them testing the land and them testing, doing further testing actually will make the resilience project look bad. The East Coastal, what they're doing between, what they did between Sandy and the East Coastal resilience is actually, is what's killing us in Jacob Rees. And I don't know if it's affecting Lilian War and, and Baruch because, you know, we are under the power plant, the old manufactured gas plant, and that's what I think Joel left out too. So we are very compromised as it is when Sandy came and kind of like mixed up the soil, but now you have them digging in our site, cutting our pipes. We just had a TA meeting, and they said they're going to dig under, down, under the east, the FDR Drive to go through our, our project to do some sewer, sewer thing. Well, sewer, sewer pipes for who? For us or for what's happening in the resilience project? Every time they do that, they shut off our water too, to in addition to what's going on, you have to run the water for forty minutes. How about if someone doesn't have a phone, so they don't get the texts that say you have to run your water for forty minutes? Or you just say your water will be shut off for, you know, X amount of time, but they don't tell you why, or, you know? They don't say that in these texts or these voice blasts that they do, but they could, and they're not doing it because they don't want the projects to look bad, the resilience project to look bad. But if, if I may, a few more seconds? Even for the resilience project, for Sandy, they've, I think they're mixing funds. And I'd say this because Jacob Rees, one, looks like it's been prepped for RadPAC, and RadPAC, Jacob Rees is unique where they're letting us vote for RadPAC, but we've already been like prepped for it, and I can explain that in later on, but meaning like if you asked me that question. But now, so here we are, we've been prepped for something that we may not even do, and I just lost my job. It's, it's bad. I'm just going to say it's bad. And not only do, this has been a situation, we're not even, at this point, the residents don't even know what's happening about this whole RadPAC. They don't. I think we're going through a crisis, and I really, really think that the Department of Health should be stationed outside on Avenue D, on every single block to test the residents. That's how bad it is. It's bad, and we're dying. They're ignoring us. Our three-one-one calls are even going, and I think it's all the developments is going straight to NYCHA, and it falls short. We have permits that have expired more than two, three years that just came up onto our buildings. Three-one-one calls, where they go, those permits are still there.
Thank you. How long have you lived at, at Rees?
I lived there forty-five years, and my mother, listen, my mom was very sick for a lot of years, but she really started getting more sick during the time the resilience started, the project, like really bad, hospitalizations one after the other. We never tested her, as far as I'm concerned, for arsenic or lead or anything like that, but we've always wondered why, the doctors, why she was so sick and had so many things wrong with her. The only way right now to see if my mother had these high levels is to exhume her body. But I've had three surgeries related, potentially related to exposure to this arsenic and lead, and I led a pretty good health, like, meaning like diet, and never connected it, you know what I mean? But now, it's not that I'm looking for an excuse, but I have been walking around, sorry, with EpiPen, that's, I'm affected in that way too. Severe allergies, I never had that when I was growing up. I have, I know a neighbor, an elderly lady, her eyeballs get this big, and we also have cracks on our, on our ceilings and floors. And this is, if, if the sand, if the money hasn't been mixed from the Sally resilience to what's happening with the coast, East Coastal, or the PAC, or whatever the case may have you, then why is it that we have all these splits and stuff like that in our developments? Like, why put, why put these things on our roof if you know that we're not stable? And one more thing, and I am so sorry, I don't know, NYCHA appears to be RadPAC. They keep saying, the state is saying that RadPAC is, is NYCHA, and it's like there's, they're having like an identity crisis. But in public, it's like they're, they're talking in the third or second, like, identity, like, it's like, who's RadPAC? Because you're talking about like it's a separate person, but when you talk to certain people, even RadPAC representatives that are from NYCHA, it's, they're the same. RadPAC is NYCHA. So how can you ask the person, a, a, a invisible person to get back to you when you're the person? And they make, I don't know what's going Cause you're talking about like it's a separate person, but when you talk to certain people, even Rad PAC representatives that are from NITRA, it's, they're the same. Rad PAC is NITRA. So how can you ask the person, a, a, a invisible person to get back to you when you're the person? And they make, I don't know what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Renee Kit and I'm representing Safe Section 9. Let me use a plant analogy. Eliminating security at senior centers is comparable to root shock. Stunted growth can lead to death. This will make our elders vulnerable and distressed. You have starved our housing. This is being done by design to put a stake in the heart of the community. Home is a place where you should feel relaxed, secure and at peace. Instead, our seniors will feel imprisoned. Experiences of community safety have health implications for older adults. Social disruption, deterioration of mental, physical and emotional health contribute to the feelings of isolation and loneliness among our elders. There is no excuse for this. You don't balance the budget off of our elders' back. If this was your family, would you do this? How would you feel? Our seniors are our knowledge tree and foundation. They shouldn't be used as a bargaining trip. You don't negotiate humanity. $7 million is a pittance. The city has $108 billion budget. NITRA has chosen not to ask. Either you provide security or allow for intergenerational sites so seniors are not left to be preyed upon. NITRA must invest in doors, intercom and blended sites. And also, asking the PSA can do this. Um, the PSA has a rather large area. They're going from the Rutgers houses all the way to Fulton and Elliott Chelsea. That's a really large site. They can't do it. They have always said they do not have the capacity. You can't keep having and pass the buck. It continues. It has to stop. Someone has got to make them accountable.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I'm speaking on the behalf of, of Brooklyn, Mount Arak. I feel and believe that, I feel, I feel and believe that the seniors are being stripped of their rights. I feel that, uh, and it saddens me, it really saddens me to see all of this. I just was transferred, I lived 45 years in Red Hook and I was transferred here at, in Brooklyn at Reverend Brown's housing. And I've been here only for three months. Also, I see the bored, the bored, the, the boredness in a lot of the seniors, they're restless, they're not, they're not happy. And also they're not communicating or being active. And we do need security also. We still continue, you know, to need security, more hours. So I just wanted to speak on the behalf of Mount Arak, that the fact that it's closed and it would be a, a good thing if they open it up. And this way, people that live in the building that are not able to walk around or move around, they're actually basically homebound, they can at least come down to the cafeteria and speak to other people and communicate and be a little bit more active. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Mr. Alvin Nagro. I'm a tenant of Valade Houses for 67 years. I'm also the TA president. I'm here, first I want to thank you for having us here, also have several issues myself. Valade Houses issues is fire repairs and shambles. We have so many issues with the lead, the cabinets, the heating, the, the roofs, the roofing. We just did a roofing, we TDX contractor did a fairly good job, but the issue I have with the contractor is that they get like a $25 million contract and they sublease the contract for $2 million. So where does the other $23 million go? To the company? Also issues I have with, um, my own apartment, the house assistant came to my home and told me my house was unsuitable to live in. I had cracked ceiling, one circuit breaker, you know? I haven't had a cabinet in five years. My door downstairs hasn't worked in five years. I have a cabinet on the bottom dry rotted. My wife's health is asthma, diabetes, my children have asthma. They refuse to, we put all the paperwork in with the doctors, they refuse to give us a transfer. I'm asking for these people for my paperwork so I can take it to the court and something to get done. There's nothing being done. I lived there so long, this should not be happening. And also the security situation, we have senior citizens who are scared to come out of their apartments. We just, uh, based, recently we just got a couple of evictions due to, to help with the tenants and the, and the management and the PSA for, but we still got the squatters, we still got the drug situation. There's no PSA for appearance unless you make a phone call. Last time I went to the subway, the PSA guy was working in the subway. He works for housing, was he doing the East Broadway subway? I said, what you doing here? Oh, they got me over here today. I said, angels want to be in the PSA for? You know, and there's other issues I have. The, a situation with the Rad. Um, how can they say, like for instance, the Sewer Park extension switched to the Rad? And they said you don't get no capital money after that. And there was a situation earlier when they spoke about, people still getting capital money from fixing certain areas and they have the Rad. But how can the Rad get money from federal government? Like the Rad is federal government. So they're getting millions and millions of dollars. So if there's no capital money, if they don't get capital money, but still getting money from the federal government, that's a catch 22. Also, my wife and I, she's a correspondent secretary to my, uh, on my board, we looked up the Rad the other day. There was a gentleman in Manhattanville projects. He had somebody come to his house with one of those lease things from the Rad and told him that if he doesn't sign the paper, he's gonna lose his apartment. They're doing strong arm tactics that not being noticed. And I live in, and as a tenant, I'm the president, they're saying my project is going private and I don't even know about it. There's too many issues with housing, like the young lady that was in charge of housing. Every time they spoke to her, pound to talk to her, she didn't know nothing. How can you have somebody who's a, uh, the chairman of housing that doesn't know anything? Everything you're through at her, she knows nothing. I don't know about this, I don't know about that. What do you know? How can you be a boss? They need to let these people that's, uh, executive of housing, walk through these projects at night. Let them walk through the project, see what's going on.
Thank you.
With the drug situation and everything else.
Thank you very much. Okay, everybody, I'll give you 30 seconds.
Sorry, I think that some of the money, and I may be, I don't know if this is correct, but for my building, I, we've had a security or a safety guard for five months. And we're not a senior housing, we're not a senior building. And I think they say it's because there's no water in our pipes. So they're there Monday through Saturday, the fire guard, but, but this is a dual, this is a dual, a agency that provides both service. So, yes. So I think that some of the money is going there. He's been in our building, but he's only in our building for Monday through Saturday, like a specific shift, and then there's no one else. So if there's actually no water in our pipes, I mean, wouldn't that require like 24 hour like service? I mean, I don't know, I'm not saying that I want it, cause I want that money to go towards the seniors, but that's where some of the money might've gone. And if my building's that way, I think it's more so that they have these guards in these buildings that they're developing more or are more conscious of. Because my building, I think that my building is like adjacent to where the, the actual hub of the old manufactured gas plant. So when you walk, you can feel the heat off the ground and the tar has developed all over the grass. And on the other building and where I think is going on, they're doing construction there too. And where these arsenic levels are coming up is where they've actually dug up the hole so deep, if you go see over like, when you can see it, it's like 50, 50 feet down. So they're exposing us and that's where these people, the high level of people who are coming up are from building right next to it.
And they, that's the same situation that's taken place at Vandelia Houses where the water is, is off or it, it's not working and they have a fire guard who's there, I think they have like two fire guards who are there. But, um, they, the seniors, they thought that they were actually gonna, they were security, but they're not there to protect the seniors. Um, and so I, I, I thank you for your testimony.
Could I just say one more thing?
30 seconds.
Okay. Here's a letter from Mount Sinai to the state and city health department asking for testing the people at Reese and everybody refused. It's urine testing, it's very inexpensive to do. And she mentioned the Brownfield site. Brownfield site has the highest levels of lead and the VOCs, there's no testing that's being done. This is a $300 air monitor that's better than what the Brownfield people are using. The city and the state and NITRA could put a few of these in, into their apartments and we will know every 10 minutes with their breathing. They're not doing that. So I just want to say it's systematic under, you know, seeking information, biological and physical, and also in terms of the water, the water towers have been bad. So you can't just keep on saying that the city water is good, there's water tower problems that are there.
When we have, when we have the hearing with. When we have our hearing with Department of Health and Environmental Protection, we're gonna bring it up.
Right. But also with the fire protection, I was the environmental attorney for the firefighters' union, they wanna know planning when there's an emergency. There was no fire drills that go on in NITRA housing, it's only required for commercial housing. There should be more coordination with the first responders to know how to deal with a flood, know how to deal with a fire and everything else. There's not there, and then regulations right now state that the fire department can't really do, ask for fire drills. So there's something you wanna look into is that the first responders want a much better bit. And also the, they mentioned that there's flooding all over again, there is no real, you know, evacuation plans. And I just wanna say with, with, with $28 million that Smith did, is they build walls, they keep the people stuck in wheelchairs, they can't get out, that's an ADA violation.
Thanks.
Okay.
May I say one more thing?
We're gonna wrap up, we're gonna wrap up now. Go ahead, that's, and then that's it.
The Resiliency Program is coming to my meeting on Thursday. They're having a 90 day, you can't park your cars for like 90 days in our community, from Cherry Street in Water, always to, down to Catherine Street. Where are the people supposed to park at? They have a $4.5 billion budget. Why can't they supply the people with parking?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two people on Zoom now. Patricia Ryan and Mbaki Theam. Patricia Ryan and Mbaki Theam.
You may begin.
Patricia Ryan, you may begin.
You may begin.
Mbaki Theam, are you there? Theam?
You may begin.
I'm married. I'm married, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was married, I was trying to, I mean, myself, it took a little while. Yeah, so my name is Mbaka Champa, I'm the Housing and Health Community Organizer at Center for the Independent of the Disabled in New York, mostly known as Sydney. Sydney is the birth of people with disabilities in the fiber of, of New York City. We are a nonprofit organization founded in 1978. We are part of the Independent Living Centers Movement, a national network of grassroots and, uh, uh, community-based organizations that enhance opportunities for people with disabilities to direct their own lives. I am here today to testify at the FY, uh, Executive Budget Hearing regarding housing, uh, public housing, uh, exactly, uh, you know, NITRA. As we know that a large number of people with disabilities, uh, you know, benefiting from Section 8 and live in these public, uh, houses. So we receive many calls from our seniors and disabled consumers regarding accessibility, uh, elevator repairs and safety issues, especially in NITRA Grand Senior Center. So we want, uh, the administrative system, also the city, to take drastic measures and address this issue. I'm curious to how long it should take to repair elevators? Because people with, uh, mobility impairment need, needed to be amel, ameliorately repaired in order to have a daily activities. So just, let's recognize that what can be very, you know, convenient and can be, you know, uh, very accessible to someone, may not be to some others. So we need to take, uh, measurement and know how long it should take to repair these elevators so people can have a daily in our life. Also, I'm going to talk about, uh, uh, seniors who need to be safe in an environment. However, there are no security.
Your time has expired.
There are no security guard, um, or doorman in buildings like San Diego houses where scotters are occupying it. I believe you, uh, you are aware of like New York scotters, right? Which is, uh, scotters occupy a property for more than a month, so they may not be able to be evi, uh, evicted by the police. So it, and it always, uh, take a lot of time, it may take a time, a longer process to take them to court in order to get them evicted. So it's a danger for people with disabilities and the seniors in these NITRA buildings. And, uh, I know my time is very limited, so, uh, if I can have answers about these issues, that would be great. If not, then I would just submit evidence testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, last call for Patricia Ryan.
You may begin.
Okay. With that, day two of the FY 25 executive budget hearings is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.